Okay, the time is two P M. So I will call the March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three Committee of the Whole Agenda to Order. And I'll begin with the land acknowledgement that the city of Fort Saskatchewan is located within Treaty Six, Territory in Métis Nation of Alberta Region Four, the ancestral and traditional territory of the Nihiwak, Denai, Blackfoot, Salto Sioux, Salto Nukota Sioux, and Métis. And we acknowledge the many First Nations Métis and Inuit whose footsteps have marked these lands for generations. It is because of our treaty relationship that we can live, work, and play on Treaty Six Territory. So before we begin the meeting, because of the tragedy that occurred in Edmonton with Constable Ryan and Constable Jordan, we would like to take a moment of silence. So if everybody would move your hats and we'll take a thirty-second moment of silence. Thank you. And we do that because we want to acknowledge and recognise that even though this tragedy occurred in Edmonton, many of the police officers that work for EPS live in our communities and are part of, part of our communities. And they just don't serve in Edmonton when something's going on. You know, it's, they participate, they join in in what's happening. So, you know, this is just a terrible tragedy that has happened and we want to let the city of Edmonton Police know that we stand alongside of them. So, thank you. So with that, I will ask for an approval of the February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three minutes. Counselor Abatoye?
I'll make a motion that council approves the minutes of the February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented and circulated.
Thank you. Are there any errors or omissions? Not seeing any. I will close the motion. Please cast your vote. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. So we do have one delegation that has pre-registered for today. That would be Derek Graff, President of F S F F A. And if you would like to come up to the presentation area. And you will have five minutes to speak and I understand it's on the Fire Services Master Plan. Just give me one second here. Yep. Okay, so welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Derek Graff. I'm the President of Fort Saskatchewan Firefighters Association. On behalf of your Fort Saskatchewan firefighters, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. We are highly trained, skilled professionals who proudly work day and night to serve the residents of Fort Saskatchewan. And we are deeply woven in the social fabrics of this community. Firefighters don't just fight fires. We do much more. We're the first on scenes of crashes on Highway fifteen and twenty-one. We respond to hazardous material incidents, water rescues, and we're on the front lines of critical medical emergencies. We not only live and work in the community, but we're honoured to serve the citizens of Fort Saskatchewan on and off the clock. Over the years, Fort Saskatchewan firefighters have raised thousands of dollars for charities like muscular dystrophy, kids with cancer, and most recently, we have partnered with various organisations such as Fort Saskatchewan Multicultural Association, Indigenous Society of Fort Saskatchewan, Firefighter Aid Ukraine, and the Food Bank, to name a few. We all know Fort Saskatchewan is not a small rural town anymore. It has grown significantly over the past ten years, seeing a twelve percent increase in population from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-one, making it one of the fastest growing cities with over ten thousand new residents calling Fort Saskatchewan their home. Over the last twenty years, we've grown from thirteen thousand people to now a community of almost thirty thousand residents. With rapid growth, there is a responsibility to ensure amenities, infrastructure, and services accurately match the population they serve. Fort Saskatchewan continues to flourish with developments in the West Park and South Fort areas, along with additional urban development planned along the annexed land on Highway twenty-one. Recently announced industrial projects will see several thousands of jobs created in the immediate interim, retaining four hundred to six hundred permanent positions. Our industry uses a standard called NFPA seventeen-ten to provide the minimum requirements for responding to calls and the number of firefighters on fire trucks. NFPA seventeen-ten defines three core aspects. How fast the fire department needs to get to calls, how many firefighters should be on fire trucks, and how many firefighters are on scene. So why is this important? As outlined in the Bear Report, we must arrive and respond and arrive promptly with enough firefighters to ensure we are operating with an effective response force. Seconds matter. Fire doubles in size every thirty seconds. It's essential for firefighters to arrive on scene quickly to stop the fire from spreading and save any citizens that may be trapped. While we may have one apparatus respond in ten minutes, this does not create an effective response force as we may be waiting upwards of twenty to thirty minutes for a second apparatus to arrive, whether that be our own resource or a Strathcona County unit. Increased intervention time can have the following important impacts on the property owner. Decreased survivability for trapped victims, increased loss in the event of an emergency, building design restriction, higher property insurance premiums, and other economic impacts. We need the tools to reach all residents, no matter where they live in the city. This can be accomplished by having enough firefighters in our fire halls and adhering to NFPA seventeen-ten standard as closely as possible. You've inherited this problem. This problem was not created overnight, and it won't be fixed tomorrow. We need a plan. We believe adopting the recommendations to increase the immediate staffing are crucial to addressing the challenges facing our community and our membership. We are happy to see the discussions surrounding a second fire hall and believe this will be the most cost-effective way to ensure that current and future developments have the fire protection the residents deserve. Fort Saskatchewan is not a small town anymore. It has matured into a thriving city, and we need a plan to address the current obstacles and prevent further issues in the future. We encourage you to adopt this plan and provide the funding to support the fire chief in implementing the recommendations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll just ask council if they have any questions for you. We don't get into discussion and debating with you at this point in time, but if council has any questions of clarification, this would be the time to ask. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mary Catcher, and thank you, Derek. I have one question, Derek. If all of the recommendations in the current report were adopted by the union's estimate, what annual cost total would that be, including the second fire hall?
Your worship through to Counselor Kelly. I believe the figures are outlined in the recommendations of the Bear Report. So if we want to turn to that, it'd probably be our best bet, but.
Okay, so we'll get that information, Counselor Kelly, when the consultant comes up, if that's okay?
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oops. I just have to ask a question. Who's our second virtual person that's on there? Do we know?
Through your worship, that's likely the presenter from Bear.
Okay, okay. I'd just like to double check. Okay, still, we're on to any clarifying questions. Counselor Abatoye?
Thank you for your presentation. You made a comment about the city growing by twelve percent since two thousand and sixteen. How long, how much has the fire department grown since two thousand and sixteen, do you know?
The fire department has seen substantial growth in the last bit. Obviously, the big one was in two thousand and twenty, switching to a staffing one, full-time apparatus. But what we're finding now is that the city, as the city continues to grow, we need to make sure that we have that adequate response force, which we're finding is, is not necessarily appropriate with what we have staffed right now.
So do you have a number?
A number, sorry.
Do you have a number for how, how, how much the fire department has grown since then?
Yeah, so this would be outlined. Obviously, we want to adhere as close to NFPA seventeen-ten as we can, which identifies three criteria, low, medium, and high-risk incidents. Low-risk incidents are upwards of fifteen firefighters on scene, which is something we haven't necessarily been able to accomplish.
Sorry, I'm just gonna stop you there. I just need a number. So twelve percent, the city grew by twelve percent since two thousand and sixteen. So how much has the fire department grown since two thousand and sixteen? That's my question. And if you don't have the number, that's okay. I'm just wondering, do you have that number?
Oh, not necessarily. We've, we've transitioned from purely like paid-on call to having some full-time staff.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. That looks like all the questions for you. And as you know, we're dealing with this as the next item. But for anybody else who is in the audience, delegations, you don't have to pre-register if the item is on the agenda. You are welcome to come up and have your five minutes to have a say. But it's only for the items either Fire Services Master Plan or Weed Control Plan. So I'll ask a second time. Not seeing anybody racing up. Okay, then we will move right along for our presentation of the Fire Services Master Plan. Todd Martins and Bear Integrated Solutions will be presenting. And I'll just remind everybody here today, this is a Committee of the Whole. We don't make decisions at Committee of the Whole. We hear information. Any decisions will be made at a future council meeting. But Committee of the Whole is to allow council an opportunity to receive information and to ask questions and provide some feedback. So with that, this is our main item that we have. So Todd, anytime you can begin.
Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. Todd Martins, Fire Chief of the City of Fort Saskatchewan. And joining me today is, to my left is Jeff Carlisle, Isaac Commandante, and online is Dale McLean with Bear Integrated Solutions. Presenting today is our first-ever Fire Service Master Plan. This is an in-depth look into our service levels, programs, equipment, and much more. We have seen a lot of positive change over the last three years since going full-time, and we're still a fairly new department. This plan will help us build while moving us forward and providing that roadmap or blueprint over the next few years as we continue to grow. The recommendations present, present today will also help us identify our top priorities as we move forward effectively and efficiently. The recommendations from the Fire Service Master Plan were conducted with a comprehensive review and were broken out into seven, twenty-seven recommendations. And now I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. So I'll, in the interest of time, because it's, there's quite a few slides, we'll just move right into it. And we'll start with our introductions. To my left here is Isaac Commandante. He's the Vice President for Emergency Management with Bear Integrated Solutions and my immediate supervisor. I was this project lead as Senior Technical Advisor for the Fort Saskatchewan Fire Department Master Plan. And virtually is Dale McLean, who is a Senior Technical Advisor as well. I believe our team members embody three hundred and fifty years of firefighting experience. And we also have a lot of technical support like G I S and those types of services that help us with these types of master plans. So, and we have done a number of these over the years. So the project goals.
Just before you begin, Jennifer, you can take the timer off. They're not on a timer. I don't think you can do it in four minutes.
I could, but wouldn't be very coherent.
Oh, you'll just have to push your button again.
What is your discretion in terms of questions on the fly, or do we do the questions at the end of the presentation? I can go either way.
I would suggest do your presentation. We'll ask questions at the end because quite often what happens is you're presenting something, we get ahead of you. And then you go, well, it's in the next slide. So just, let's do the presentation and then people can write their questions down and we'll ask at the end.
Thank you, your worship. So the project goals, as you can see there, enhance the firefighter safety and increase efficiency and effectiveness. And to meet the current and future needs of the community. I'm not going to read all of these. That would put everybody to sleep. Not that they're not important, but they're all contained in the report, which I believe has already been circulated to council. So we look at solutions to mitigate immediate requirements, any risks or gaps, opportunities to meet unmet needs, look at cost control and containment. Fire and emergency services are very expensive. So we want to make sure that you have the right-sized fire service based on the risks that your community has. And of course, the increased operational efficiency and effectiveness. So part of the project objectives were to look at every aspect as the fire chief had indicated, from administration, training, public education, facilities, emergency management, your fleet, those things that you use to deliver the services. So part of it was a consultation process which we undertook. We had a community and fire tour, online firefighter survey, and we also conducted a municipal comparative analysis of similar communities to Fort Saskatchewan. We did a bunch of targeted interviews. You see the list of those who participated in the targeted interviews to, to understand. So we gained a better understanding of how Fort Saskatchewan Fire Service works. The risk factors that were prevalent in the consultation process are as presented here. The anticipated growth and additions in building stocks. Obviously, you're in an industrial corridor. You have a rail transport system that surrounds the community, dangerous goods. You have plants here in natural gas or oil sands, processing plants, those types of things, industrial occupancies. You have limitations with your current composite model, and I'll talk about that later. Composite means that you use a combination of full-time and paid-on-call staff. And the other one that came is reliability of firefighting supply. Some areas of your city do not have fire hydrants or the capacity that's necessary to fight fire. Those are the prevalent themes that came from the consultation. As the union president had mentioned, there is an international organisation, National Fire Protection Association. It sets out standards for a number of aspects of fire and emergency services and life safety code. These are not mandatory for a municipality to adopt. They are leading our best practices and can be used in a foundation where most municipalities in Canada develop their own risk management model and their service delivery standards based on that. But we use these along with provincial regulations like the firefighter occupational health and safety and the limiting distance criteria in the National Building Code of Canada, Alberta Edition. So their seventeen-ten is applicable to full-time services. Seventeen-twenty is specific for combination fire departments or composite where you use a full-time and career. And these can form the basis for service delivery standards based on a complete risk assessment of your community. So in this particular graphic, what I wanted to demonstrate was the limiting distance and intervention time. This occurred, I'm thinking, it's got to be a dozen years or more before when Chief Wolsey was in Edmonton and he had a huge fire that consumed a large condo construction site that was under, that was being built at the time, and it just, it was a very catastrophic event. So from that came an amendment to the building code, which includes intervention time and limiting distance. And essentially what it says is that in Fort Saskatchewan, for example, the fire service must have a crew respond with intervention capabilities within ten minutes and ninety percent of the time. If you're outside of that, your construction and your zoning would need to change in your development. There's some options that we'll talk about later when I get into that recommendation. But essentially, this is the ten-minute response zone around your development, your growth area that the Alberta Building Code specifies. This graphic just shows how it works. So in this case, this first icon would be Strathcona County, their communication centre. And they have confirmed that the fire department's on its way. So this is what happens next, is you have a crew that's, can do intervention. And the incident commanders, you can see here, and that has to be established within ten minutes in ninety percent of occurrences. This is what it looks like in, in somewhat of a simple graphic of the limiting distance and where the building code applies in this case. So we take a look at the minimum duty strength that you have right now. So this is the, the staff that's on duty twenty-four and seven in the station. So right now, your configuration is one assistant chief, you have a captain, you have a firefighter, and you have a paid-on call. And the paid-on call are scheduled in, as I understand it, from your, the group of paid-on call you have to, so that you have four firefighters on duty for your response. So if we were looking at seventeen-ten, this is what it would look like. In this graphic, you see that this house is on fire. The first thing that happens within ten minutes, or correction, within six minutes and thirty-five seconds is you have the initial attack crew come in. And then within ten minutes, you will have a complete alarm assignment of fifteen firefighters. I'll get, I'm getting ahead of myself. The full alarm assignment, we see all the units that are assigned to that particular response within ten minutes and thirty-five seconds. And it looks like fifteen personnel, seventeen, if you use an aerial device, and supply pump in operation. That's what seventeen-ten looks like. Now, if we look at seventeen-twenty, which is more for urban rural composite departments, in this case, I'm using urban as the demand zone. The urban is relative to the population density within the response zone. In this case, you will see that there's a need for fifteen firefighters for the full alarm sign. And in the seventeen-ten, it's ninety, nine minutes, ninety percent of the time. So you can see now, when you, you see the, the, the point of this was to show you what the building code requires for new development. It's showing you what the leading standards are in terms of seventeen-ten, seventeen-twenty. So it would be logical now, I believe, to take a look at what your current capacity is based on our analysis of your response system. So this is your structural response, and I should make a point here that we use a structural response as the benchmark because it is the highest risk, most complex operation that we perform as firefighters. There's other things like dangerous goods, technical rescues, MVIs. They require similar staffing, not to, necessary to a full-and-go fire, but you still have to have the number of firefighters to do it. And we'll talk about those critical tasks later in the presentation, but I don't want to hang our hat solely on firefighting because the Fort Saskatchewan Fire Department does much more than show up to residential fires. There's a lot of other things going on in your community. So let's, I digress a little bit. Let's look at what your capacity is right now. So we know right now that this happens is your four-man minimum duty strength that we, four-person, to be correct, sorry, four-person minimum duty strength is showing up within eleven minutes. From the data that we have, we have, the ninetieth percentile shows that you're just around eleven minutes to have that first crew show up there. Behind this is your supervisor, the assistant chief. And in our analysis, it shows up that they're within two minutes and forty-five seconds. Now, there's a number of reasons for that. They may be collecting other information. They may be predisposed at some other task, doing a fire inspection or something like this. But this was what you would have within, that's going to be within twelve minutes and, or thirteen minutes and forty-five seconds. You would have four people on, on this particular fire. Now, the next thing we do is you call in your paid-on call, and in this case, it can take up to, if I've got this right, it takes up to, wrong slide. Within forty-five minutes of the event. So this is the second pump that you just saw come in. That's your paid-on call being called in from their place, a home or business, wherever they're working. They get to the station, they staff the vehicle, and they respond to the scene. That takes time, especially particularly if it's in the middle of the night, if it's winter conditions, those types of things, which is part of that limitation to the paid-on call system. You also have a, a automatic aid with Strathcona County. And this automatic aid can occur if they're available within twenty-five to thirty minutes. And again, the point is if, if available. And the same applies for your paid-on call. If it's the long weekend in May and the weather is good, you may not get as many paid-on call recall to a situation that you would think. And that is my experience in Fort McMurray as a fire chief there. We had a major event on a long weekend, and we could only get a handful of firefighters to respond. And in this case, the final truck that would arrive would possibly be in sixty minutes with your aerial apparatus. And it's total firefighters on scene right now within this one-hour timeframe is possible from twelve to nineteen firefighters. And again, it's really hard to pinpoint because you're relying on people who are disposed throughout the community. A lot of your paid-on call don't even live in Fort Saskatchewan, and they have to drive in to, to get to the apparatus. So we take a look at your ten-minute response zone. This, now we're back to the building code. And right now, based on what we did was we took your ninetieth percentile on your alarm handling. How long is it taking Strathcona County to alert your firefighters? How long does it take the firefighters to get out of the station, which is called shoot time? So we take the ninetieth percentile of both of those, how much time it's taking, and it leaves you two hundred and seventy-nine seconds travel time. This is your ten-minute perimeter that you can see in red there where your, where your current single station response can meet. If you add the station at the, constructed at one fifty-one South Ridge Boulevard, as you can see, the purple area, and you can see the difference. I'll just go back. That's a single station. That's a double station. Shows you what your ten-minute response time would look like in areas that are undeveloped, as you can see, are shaded purple if there, if the intent was to develop those areas. Okay, so you know, the intent of the Fire Service Master Plan was to provide a series of recommendations and implement over a ten-year timeframe. We recommend that you, you look at this every year. The fire chief uses this as part of his business planning and budget process to make sure the recommendations are relevant. So I will move right into the recommendations. And the first recommendation is around the, the process of development and plan approval between the fire department and your planning and development department. It has enhanced greatly, but I think there's a need for a formal policy that includes the Fort Saskatchewan Fire Department in subdivision land use and development planning process. You can see in all our recommendations, we identify a cost and a suggested timeline and a priority. I, I won't necessarily read those. Cost neutral means that it's staff time, and we understand that staff time is not cost neutral and that it's a workload capacity. But I guess what we're, we're referring here, there would be no budget increase necessarily to implement this. The second one is to look at a centralised system to maintain the infrastructure in the building, facilities, structural inventory central, so that all your departments can have an access, public work can have a look at it, you have a business licence. Facilities, structural inventory central, so that all your departments can have an access, public work can have a look at it, your have a b- business license. Uh, the building inspectors, uh, the fire department would have access to a centralized system. And this way, we would know, the fire chief would know as, uh, new inventories and structures, uh, are built. He would be able to assess that as a risk and the services that he's providing. So this, uh, again, is, uh, something that can be done, uh, in-house and, uh, we identify the timeline there. This is with respect to the, uh, National Building Code of Canada, Alberta Building, uh, Codes Limiting Distance and Fire Department Response. Is you establish a regulation for all new development that enforces compliance with that regulation. In the, uh, building code, there are options. The, uh, you know, the one we've already talked about is build another station, uh, but there's other options, sprinkler the whole development. Is identified in the building code as a way to offset that. The third option is to, uh, uh, enhance the limiting distance, and the limiting distance is the distance between two buildings. And you enhance the construction so that fire won't, um, extend from one structure to the other. And you do that by beefing up the construction and limiting the exposed, uh, openings like windows and doorways. And if you do that, there, and you can apply a different calculation for the spatial, uh, separation of the building. And you won't require the larger lots, which is the other option, is that you maintain the full limiting distance, uh, calculation. In the building code requiring, uh, larger distances between residential structures. And in this case, because, uh, Fort Saskatchewan is growing and developing, the council will need to, uh, to work with your, your developers, your planning department. Uh, and your engineering, uh, I believe to come up with what is, uh, Fort Saskatchewan going to look at, is their ten minute. Uh, response, uh, policy and how they'll apply that particular regulation. So this was respect to the amount of, uh, dangerous goods that goes through your community, uh, to support the, uh, industry that's, uh, located here. And it's just to continue to evaluate and look at your response protocols and pre-incident training for dangerous goods. Um, having been up the chief in Fort McMurray, I know that there's a lot of, uh, dangerous goods going through there and we had to keep a close eye on it. We had incidents up there where the highway was closed, which is a major event when you only have one highway in and out. And I would say that there's a similar amount of quantities of chemicals that are going through, uh, your community or in close proximity. And they don't discretion, there's no discretion when these things spill, if it's toxic, it'll go with wherever the wind condition. So even if it's not, uh, right through downtown, uh, Fort Saskatchewan, uh, anything on the peripheral would also create a risk. And we evaluate this as a, um, a low probability, but the high consequence situation. Uh, low meaning it won't happen, if you look at Bayesian inference, what's the probability something will occur over a period of time? In this case, a dangerous goods incident is a low probability, but the consequences can be huge. This is with respect to fire smarting and working with Strathcona County, there is some, uh, opportunities to support the fire. Uh, smart program through the grass and crop lands, uh, within the Heartland County and, uh, Fort Saskatchewan. There are grants available through provincial programs to assist municipality to complete plans and implement and reduce risk strategies. Establish two full-time fire, uh, safety codes officer positions. Or alternatively, contract out your fire safety, uh, code, fire discipline requirements. Uh, the two, uh, the safety codes officers are looking at two of them at two hundred and twenty per year, including corporate costs. And this is to look at your fire prevention, your emergency pre-planning program, your, um, uh, public education. Those programs that are currently done on shift, uh, when they have the capacity to do it. And some of it's being done by, uh, your chief and your assistant chiefs. Um, so there's a couple of options there, there are agencies you can contract that requirement to. And there's a back, current backlog of uncompleted inspections due to the challenge of these non-emergency response activities being assigned to the platoons. And, uh, further sustainability of the fire, uh, city's fire accreditation may be at risk, there is additional, um. Uh, qualifications required based on the types of structures and facilities that you see coming to Fort Saskatchewan. So update your, uh, QMP, your fire safety plan, which is requirement of the Safety Codes Act. Uh, right now, you have a cyclical, uh, fire inspection, uh, would identifies, like, for example, schools or hospitals. Uh, workshops, those things on a, uh, recurring cyclical, maybe annual, semi-annual, bi-annual. What we're saying here is to look at it a risk basis, put your attention where your risks are. Those are typically assembly occupancies where the highest life safety or industrial occupancies where there's the highest non-compliance. So rather than go and keep, uh, doing the same inspections on, you know, particularly with, uh, very safe, uh, structures and people who are. Uh, conscious about that, look at where your risks are and focus your capacity where the risks are. Establish a second deputy chief position to support training, fire prevention functions. Uh, when compared to similar sized fire departments, the administrative leadership team shown in the org chart is consistent with industry leading practices. However, the portfolio is assigned to the fire chief and deputy includes operations, training, fire inspection, investigation, administration. And emergency management results in a work, uh, load shortfall. So we're recommending that, uh, you're the second deputy fire chief to take. The fire chief should be looking at moving the department forward in, in a strategic way, monitoring the growth in the community. Looking at his performance, emergency response performance and, and moving the department forward. Uh, in more of a strategic planned approach, as opposed to, uh, being in the trenches doing fire inspections and investigations. Uh, conduct a feasibility analysis of, uh, building a firefighter training. I understand that you've, uh, used the fire training at Spruce Grove, uh, or a period of time. But this requires, uh, you to deploy your resources out of your community along with your firefighters. And we think that there's, uh, feasibility study to look at, uh, building a firefighter training facility here. So that your firefighters stay within their response zone, they can train when they're on duty. And your POCs have a place that's within the response zone that they, uh, demand zone that they can, um. Uh, training and it reduces the need to rely on outside agencies. So there are a number of specialized services that are identified in, uh, council's policy, the S A. S A F A dash zero one five dash C Fire Department Service Level. And those are, um, technical rope rescue, trench rescue, confined space and building collapse, um. You reckon, you identify those as a service, however, uh, you're currently not equipped or trained to maintain these services. We'll talk about this more when we get into the standard of cover. But from a higher level perspective is take a look at that policy and all the services you're asking, that you're, that you've asked the fire chief to deliver. And take a hard look at those, and if you're gonna ask your firefighters to do them, you need to train them and equip them to do that. I mean, and, and that's just my opinion, that's from your, uh, OHS regulation in Alberta for, uh, for firefighter safety. So in these particular cases are identified and, uh, you're not training, uh, or equipping your firefighters to do those. So this is the modify the, uh, QMP again, uh, with the cyclical inspection program, you could have the risk base. And identify some cyclical ones, but you need the resources to do it. So we're saying you need to have the fire inspector program, you need to have the safety codes officers enabled to do that. And with the growth that you have and the type of community that you have in terms of your building, infrastructure, industrial component. This is a good thing to, uh, to look at, is to, uh, have your QMP amended. That you have some cyclical ones that you believe are high to, to look at, but also focus on risk. And the capacity to perform those fire inspections and public education. And this falls right in with the safety codes, is the pre-emergency plan inventory program. Uh, when the firefighters respond out of the station, they have, uh, they're equipped with information that talks about. Where the power shut off, gas shut off is, what has materials are contained in the building, what the occupancy is. This all comes to them on route to the, uh, to the scene, so they have a really good assessment of what's, uh, they're up against. As they do their first initial size up. So these are key, uh, pieces of information, uh, for the firefighters to be, uh, effective and efficient. Your current, uh, contract with Strathcona County, uh, does not include alarm processing and handling performance measures. The, um, NFPA twelve twenty-one, it's NFPA, uh, they have benchmarks and it's identified in seventeen-ten. In terms of alarm answering, call handling, call processing. And, uh, in this case, your contract does not identify that. So basically, uh, Strathcona County, it's a great, uh, piece app, public service, uh, act, safety access point. Uh, but there's no, uh, performance measure there, are they achieving the goals? That are set out, are, are leading practices and what are their performance measures to alert the Fort Saskatchewan Fire Department in a timely manner? So they can get out of the station and to the, to the scene. The emergency management program, uh, part of the, um, requirements for industry in Alberta is they all have to complete an emergency response plan. With the local municipality, you have a number of them here, and they have to be reviewed on the current, uh, current, uh, recurring basis. But also, um, at present time, my understanding is that the emergency management program is being done basically off the side of the fire chief's desk. We believe, again, based on the current, uh, demands and the future growth. That you should look at having a full-time emergency management person to look at those, uh, uh, plans. And work with industry, look at the city's ability to respond to a major's emergency, such as a dangerous goods incident. And have those, uh, the training done and the mitigation measures, uh, in place and, uh, the, um, preparedness. And that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year, including corporate costs. And if you do, or, yeah, if you do agree to have a full-time emergency management person. We're suggesting that you hire some, uh, third-party contract to go and update all the emergency plans you have now because they're out of date. It would take a full-time person two years to get caught up to where they're in the more of a proactive. Uh, based on where these emergency plans are at, uh, at the present time. A very quick one, this is just an operational system, uh, with them, when the, the foam trucks and it needs to be dealt with. And I've spoke to the fire chief about this one, so we won't dwell on that one. Uh, water servicing plan, uh, part of the fire underwriter survey includes a thing called a superior tanker shuttle. It's, uh, you get, uh, on offset in your insurance ratings, if you have the capability. To deliver water to areas where there isn't sufficient water for firefighting. In this case, we're saying that, uh, to undertake a water servicing plan for all areas of the city. Where there isn't the capacity to, uh, for firefighting. You, uh, currently, um, contract out the, um, the emergency vehicle technician. Repairs and maintenance and, um, preventive maintenance to a third party. We're looking at this, you have heavy D and mechanics within the city. Uh, if you took a look at this and certify your, a couple of your mechanics to the emergency vehicle technician level. To look after the pump systems, the foam systems, the aerial apparatus, uh, those types of things that are germane to emergency vehicle. And we estimate that this would, uh, be about twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, including the staff time for the, your mechanics to take this qualification. And then you have the capability in-house to maintain your own fleet. Your current, uh, lifecycle, um, for your heavy apparatus, uh, is, uh, I believe you're using your frontline longer than fifteen years. Where things like NFPA, the fire underwriter survey, those, uh, types of things, you all see identify fifteen years frontline. Five years, uh, as second line, so it would, this would, uh, uh, result in increased costs to your capital reserve to maintain your fleet. But it's to look at, um, replacing your, those frontline apparatus, which in this case, I think I have the note here. Your squad one, rescue one, ladder one, as frontline apparatus, it should adjust their life cycles to be fifteen years frontline. This is another operational one in terms of the self-contained breathing apparatus. And, uh, this is to accommodate the amount of air bottles and equipment you need to sustain a, an operation. And in this case, uh, like I said, this is fairly operational and the chief and I have spoke about this in terms of maintaining. That particular, uh, safety, critical safety equipment for firefighters. And this is to identify the alarm handing process to improve opportunities for, uh, and benchmarks, so let's go back. Uh, work on the contract, amend the contracts you have it, but work with Strathcona County and come up with what are the benchmarks? Can you do a transfer of alarm in fifteen seconds? Can you process it in, uh, sixty seconds or seventy-two seconds, whatever the standard. Uh, requires based on the type of call. So, uh, this is to go back, the fire chief to go back and say, you know, we want these performance measures because. If you look at that ten minute response zone, if you can, if you can shrink the alarm processing time and shrink your shoot time. Then your footprint becomes bigger for ten minutes, because you have more travel time, right now, we're using what we see as realistic. Is two hundred and seventy-nine seconds left from your ten minutes, but if you shrink those processes down, you have more travel time. To get the firefighters to that initial intervention to whatever type of emergency it is. I just stepped on my own, uh, my own recommendation, number twenty-two is to take a look at the shoot time and, uh, and see. Um, the shoot time increase for fire related is this overall compliance for the Fort Saskatchewan, a ninety-second shoot time goal was by considerable margin. Um, let's see what, what we had here for a number, I believe it was a hundred and four, it was a hundred and seventy-one seconds, which is nearly twice the goal. It's eighty seconds for, uh, if you use NFPA standard. And I do have to say that there isn't too many fire departments that I've either was a chief in or that I've, uh, done a master plan with that makes that eighty seconds. So part of the, the process will be look at what is achievable. And what are, what are the reasons that it's taking the firefighters longer to get out of the station? Is it because of the way the alarm system is being used, uh, or pre-alerts being used, what is driving that problem? Review the service level po- policy for Fort Saskatchewan. I gotta say, uh, we've done a lot of these and, uh, Fort Saskatchewan needs to be complimented in the fact that they actually have. A standard of cover policy, uh, although you're not meeting those, uh, targets that are in there. But it's refreshing to see a municipal that's actually said to the fire chief, here's the services we want you to provide, here's the level we want you to provide them to. So you need to, uh, go back and, um, look at the service levels and the response times and, uh. And the, just meet the full deployment resource required for structured fires within six minutes arriving apparatus. Whatever standard you look at is the, the chief will come back and say, here's what is achievable based on these resources we have. Or here's what we need to do to meet the community risks. And this is to look at, uh, again, the, the response options, we talked about the standards outside the, uh, ten minute response zone. Why I identified this previously in, in the, uh, the section on the mapping is. What, what do you want to do? Do you want to sprinkler these developments? Do you want to go to larger lot sizes? Do you want to do some engineering work where you can keep it, uh, the community safe? I interviewed your planning, uh, manager and I understand that your municipal development plan is to really attract people to Fort Saskatchewan. And to be able to access all amenities within, believe in twenty minutes and you want to be known as a safe and viable city. Um, I think this is, uh, this fits with that vision, yeah, there that you have the fire department, the services there that would meet that particular goal. And the next one is, uh, as the union president talked about, um, the effective response force, the number of firefighters that are required on scene. We showed you the three scenarios of seventeen-ten seventeen-twenty and what you, uh, what you currently can achieve. So based on the risk factors that we looked at in the system, the current response system. We're suggesting that you increase your minimum on-duty strength from four to six. And you staff two apparatus, um, in the, in the existing station and contemplation for the next station. Uh, there are a number of options that we've looked at in the report, that the cost estimate ranges from one point three million to one point six three million. As you see in the screen and, um, it's contingent upon the option that's selected as preferred approach. Uh, staff increase of eight or you have twelve full-time and you have eight and then you have six or four paid on call. For the total contingent, it's broke down in these options, option one, which is to do the full, uh, implementation. In twenty twenty, uh, four, which is fourteen position, which is an increase of eight full and six paid on call. Total operational full-time staff of twenty-four, six full-time, two paid on call per platoon, three full-time. three full-time and one paid-on call per truck. So each truck would have that number of, uh, of people on it. The advantage is you get that effective response force where you can handle most, uh, with your effective response time, you'll be able to deal with most of your routine calls with that level. And it's also a reduced administration effort right now to maintain your current minimum duty strength. The chief has to call in these people and it's a juggling act all the time, uh, to get, um, again, we talked about the limitations of the paid-on call. The disadvantages, obviously, it's an increased budget of one-point-three-nine million dollars in twenty-twenty-four. If you want to look at incremental staffing over a four-year period, it's all broke out here. I don't necessarily, uh, uh, need to review it on your mayor unless, uh, there's, uh, interest for me to go through that. But, um, it gives you, you know, you don't have that effective response force capability until you're fully implemented in twenty-twenty-seven. And you, each year you add people, you only get a minor enhancement of your, uh, your ability to respond to the emergencies. And, uh, again, the budget increase is, uh, would be fully, uh, implemented in twenty-twenty-seven. The third one is to reduce the number of paid-on call you have because of, uh, we looked at if you're continuing to have challenges getting your paid-on call to come in to respond, then maybe you need to look at increasing your full-time staff even higher to twenty-eight full-time staff and four. This has the heftier price tag of one-point-six, as you can see, and, uh, we're recommending that increase by twenty-twenty-six. This one here is to look at as you increase your staff, whatever option you take, take a look at the performance of your paid-on call. It's not a slight against them. There are people who live and work and do other professions, but give back to the community. It's just the nature of the system and it's right across Canada in terms of, uh, the limitations of, of the paid-on call system. If all your volunteers live in close proximity to your fire station, similar to BAMF, BAMF has incredible response time because most of the firefighters live and work in the downtown core. But when you're in a situation that you're here where they're dispersed throughout, uh, other communities and in, within your city, then it becomes a bit of a challenge. The critical task analysis, what I talked about is you take how many firefighters do you need in a motor vehicle incident? How many do you need in a technical rescue? We already know how many we need at fires because we identified those, uh, danger, small dangers, good spills, those types of things like this. So each one of those has a critical task analysis and we've, uh, provided an example in the master plan on how to do that. And to see what are those critical tasks that we can, we can achieve. Part of the master plan is an accountability process for the fire chief and for council to know how their fire department is performing. This particular one is to, to, uh, develop, uh, relevant performance metrics. Usually a dashboard is what, uh, we typically look at where the CAO and, uh, if council wants to look at on a recurring basis. Here is your performance system. Here's the number of building inspections. Here's the number of public education events we've done. Here's the type of calls we've been to. Here's how our alarm processing process is going. Our shoot times are improving or whatever the context is, it provides that, uh, uh, communication and accountability measure, uh, back, essentially back to the citizens. And your worship, that would be, uh, the end of my presentation and I'm prepared to take any questions at this point.
Okay, I think there's gonna be a hundred and one questions. My first question was for him. I'm just, uh, I've just been asked for a, um, a quick comfort break. So why don't we just take, uh, eight minutes to three o'clock? That gives him a few minutes to come back and everybody to formulate, uh, their questions and give you just a little comfort break as well.
Not off the hot seat yet.
Don't run away. I got a hundred and one questions. That's what everybody probably does. Well, we are in recess. Uh, till three o'clock. If everybody would like to start taking their seats, we'll, uh, be just one minute. Okay, that clock's thirty seconds off the atomic clock. So it's three, three P M. So we will resume our meeting. And, uh, we are going to get into questions. And I said I had a couple of questions just to start it off. I've got a whole bunch more. So I'm just gonna ask everybody, everybody, um, as we do in our council meetings, uh, to be respectful and only ask a couple of questions at a time, two, ma- maybe maximum three. We are in committee of a whole, so you can make some comments, but, um, you know, I know everybody's gonna have a lot of questions and a lot of comments. So let's make sure everybody has an opportunity to ask and I'll limit you to two or three. So, um, the first question that I have, and I said I actually wanted to direct it, uh, to our city manager. I'll just go straight over you guys. So to our, to Mr. Fleming, um, I guess the question that I have is how long you've had this report? What I didn't see, uh, included in this, um, you know, is the fact that you've had an opportunity to review it. And I know it says in the memo that you're gonna come back in Q two. So I guess the question that I have is as you're looking at this, uh, going forward, you know, what's your first, you know, and you can answer it now or you can come back to me after all the questions have been asked. That's your choice. What's, what's your thought process on steps going forward? I mean, we might as well just hit the nail on the head. We can ask all our other questions, but where are you at with that?
Uh, yeah, through your worship, um, so just, I'll give some general comments back to that. Um, I think I've had the report for, I want to say two, three weeks now, could be slightly longer than that. Um, just to be clear, the report, it, it sort of, um, acts as, I guess, a bit of a basis for us to discuss our approach going forward into the future. Um, but I know myself, like, I didn't want to intervene in the process and influence the outcome. We did, we did really want, uh, like an independent third-party assessment of the department. So, um, I had very little input outside of my stakeholder interview, the same as all the other members of council and whatnot. Um, in terms of what the report suggests for, uh, a path forward, that's completely up to the city in terms of how we wanna, um, spend, um, uh, money and, and in what way. Um, and just as a general comment, I do think that the evidence is pretty compelling that, um, just based on growth, uh, population growth, call volume growth, um, that we do need to do a better job of keeping up with growth and that there, uh, some level of investment in the fire department is probably warranted here, is warranted, I would say. Um, but how we do that, like, uh, I, I don't, I don't support one-point-six million dollars in staffing in one year. So the report can recommend that, but that's not necessarily the city's position. But again, we did want to let the, um, the consultants, uh, provide us with that third-party, um, input without, uh, influence at my level anyway. So I hope that answers your question.
That's, yeah, that's the first. I'll ask, ask you to go a little more deeper, uh, towards the end of it. Um, and then I guess, um, I'm just gonna make a comment and then I'll go on to, uh, round one of questions for everybody. You know, I just want to say I've worked for the city of Fort Saskatchewan since, uh, nineteen ninety, a long time. And I've seen a lot happen within, within the fire hall and within the fire station. And I just want to say, I think our firefighters over the number of years, I think have done an exemplary job, you know? And I know as a growing community, uh, it's, it's hard to make transitions. And it's, you know, uh, we're always faced with, with citizens, you know, saying zero budgets, zero budgets. But, you know, I think it's really important to acknowledge the work that you do within our community, that it is valued and, uh, greatly appreciated that you do show up when, when there's fires going on. So, um, I would just like to take this time to thank you, uh, for your service and, uh, ongoing service. So with that, we are going to get into questions and everybody's pretty well on here. So we'll start with councillor Macon first.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, guys. Um, it was quite a read. I have a thousand sticky notes, so, um, I'll just start with a couple. Where you have cost neutral, I was just curious if that was the opinion of Bear? Or if that came in consultation with administration?
That would be, uh, your worship, that would be our, uh, criteria. We look at that. That's our, uh, way of saying that there'd be no budgetary increase. It's the actual staff hours of existing people.
Yeah, correct. So you didn't ask administration that that was just your opinion. Okay. Um, and then, um, second one would be, and this maybe is for you, Chief Martins. I'm trying to wrap my head around, um, our paid-on call and what the expectation of paid-on call is. So if you could please just explain to me what that position is and when you're saying that there is a staff member during the day that is a paid-on-call person, where is that person coming from? Is there an expectation of how quickly they have to be able to get to the hall? Or even like paid-on-call evenings? Like, I just don't understand what that means for our fire department.
Your worship through to councillor Macon. So currently we have, uh, two paid-on co- call equivalent positions. So we run currently right now, um, two paid-on calls, uh, on opposite platoons. And they, uh, bid on shifts. So all twenty-eight paid-on calls will have the opportunity to bid on shifts based on how many shifts we have open for, for that month. So that would be one aspect of it would be the bidding and it's based on hours worked. And, um, basically when you bid on it, it goes to the lowest hours. Then we have the other component, which is the all-call process. So this is where we're asking for additional resources. And our paid-on calls are coming from home or possibly work. Um, and this is where we would ask for a second alarm or a third alarm and we need more resources on top of whoever was working that scheduled shift. And they would come from whether they're in the city, like I said, work, home, um, it's within about thirty minutes we're seeing for our living range currently, um, uh, within the city. And they come and respond, um, they jump on a truck as needed, uh, once they're not, we stand them down and, and they're back to their, 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 their jobs or, or wherever they were doing before they came. So.
Okay, so just to follow up on that, if I'm a paid-on call and I bid on a shift and I get that shift, is there a maximum expectation of how far I can be away from the hall? Or is it just, you just have to get there as soon as you can? Like, can I go to the lake that's an hour away, even though I've taken a paid-on-call shift?
Your worship through councillor Macon, no, when you bid on a shift, that's a scheduled shift, you're in station working.
Okay, alright.
A ten-hour day or a fourteen-hour night?
Okay.
When you're the, when you're not scheduled to work, that's where you can be wherever and hopefully if a call comes in, you're around.
Okay, that definitely clarifies it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just keep circulating around councillor Blizzard, you're next.
I have a few questions, but.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm in. Um, so first one, I guess, so that ten-minute map, I think all of council has been contacted. And if I hope I got the initials right by RDI, Real Estate Development.
U D I.
U D I, sorry, urban, what is it? Anyway, doesn't matter. Is there some flexibility in that map? Or is it like, here's the map, we've decided and that's where it's gonna be because they're kind of arguing with that? Is this something that we should be, I guess we're accepting the fire services master plan at some point in the future, hopefully. But is there a flexibility? Can we say, well, we don't agree with this? Or is that like a, you know, that's the way the map's designed? And I guess that's for you, chief, maybe. Or is that like a, you know, that's the way the map's designed, and I guess that's for you, chief, maybe?
Through to Counselor Blizzard, so yes, once we, once we are aware of our numbers and we notify our safety codes officer, then those numbers come into play. I would then send a letter saying that we, we are either outside or inside the ten minutes. This is the map that's provided, and then moving forward, the process would be whether you're in or out for developing that. When we look at this, we do take into consideration, are there any applications in the queue through the planning and development? And maybe Craig might be able to speak a little more to this as well. But when we look at that, we're, we're using the numbers that are actual numbers that we have from our call volume. And that's what we are working with currently. Some of the discussion we've had with the developers, I guess, is that, that notification process and how, moving forward, are we going to notify them on an annual basis if the map has changed? And, and when we look at that map, if a new subdivision comes in, how are we going to determine if it possibly is covered within the ten-minute response based on the fact that we have no road networks in some of these areas?
Right, so if a new light comes in, does, do lights affect travel time? Or is that, as we streamline those lights, I know we're talking about getting it so that they turn green and stop traffic faster, which?
Correct, so we, we are still currently working on the preemption lighting system for the, the lights on the highway that was approved in budget. Adding any lights will, will add time. We, we don't still, even though it's green, we don't go through it, you know, at Mach 10. We still slow down to a safe speed to go through that intersection because that light can be changed at about a hundred and fifty yards, and so we're still watching for traffic, so.
Okay, and I guess I should've said, thanks for the presentation, very informative. All the recommendations, though, I shouldn't say all, if, if money was no object, of course, they're great, and we'd put them all in right away. But a lot of them come in and they said cost neutral, so this is more directed at staff. So when you heard all this, are you thinking, do we even have the capacity? Cost neutral sounds good, but if someone doesn't have time for it, sits on the edge of the desk, it's not really cost neutral 'cause we'll need some new staff, so how is our administration city gonna feel on this one?
Your worship, through to Counselor Blizzard, so that would be the part where I come back. We would have to look at these twenty-seven recommendations and, and see, again, based on the recommendations from Bear, some were twelve to thirty-six months, and then workload and capacity and on what we actually can, can achieve, and maybe it's twelve out of the twenty-seven. So that's something where we would come back to council with, with further recommendations.
One more? I said two or three, so we'll limit you to three then, for now.
Training facility and the recommendation on it to get one local, I get it. I mean, it would be wonderful for all our firefighters to be able to have one locally, but I also know I've attended one in Ontario. It was out in the industrial area, do we have land that we potentially already own? Otherwise, that could cost quite a bit too. I know they're not, you're not gonna put it next to a residential area, there's smoke, there's fire trucks, there's, I mean, noise, there's all kinds of issues with having that. Do we have, has there even been a glance around? Is that even a possibility?
Your worship, through to Counselor Blizzard, yes, we have preliminary looked at some areas, as well as the, the land, possibly where, possibly the future fire hall could be. You can do clean burning facilities, so it's a propane instead of the actual burning of pallets or combustible material. So we can look at different types of options, obviously with the clean burning facilities, the cost is normally a lot higher. So we would look at that, and, and again, having that ability to have that center here saves us from sending anywhere from ten to fifteen firefighters into Spruce Grove or, or Gibbons or some of the other places that we've been using for, for their live fire facilities.
Okay, I guess that's all for now.
Yep, Counselor Abatoye?
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. So your report says that adding a secondary station will increase the coverage by approximately fifty to sixty percent, depending on the placement. My question is, like, it sounds like having a secondary fire station doesn't really solve the problem because if the coverage just increases to fifty to sixty percent, where does that leave the other parts of the city that are not in the new development, but are still outside the ten-minute time limits?
Your worship, that particular item was extracted from the Fire Underwriters Survey that was done prior, and it identified their criteria was that if you added the station, you'd increase that by fifty to sixty percent. I don't know any more of the metrics behind that, that was a quote from the, like I said, from the Fire.
So that coverage, you meant insurance coverage, is that what that means?
Fire Underwriters Survey, your worship, is a, the agency comes in on behalf of insurance companies, and they do an evaluation of your city, and there's nine criteria that they use to determine your fire department, and from that, they produce gradings for fire protection, which then translates into fire insurance premiums.
Okay, so, so I'm, I'm gonna change my question then, 'cause, okay. So if we have a secondary fire station, are we gonna cover all of the city within ten minutes if there's a fire situation or incidents?
That depends on the placement of the secondary station and the road network. The response time is based on the, what we have is we use the road network, 'cause that's how the fire truck gets there. If it's undeveloped land, we can't say that with exact specificity, but it would make sense if you have two fire stations and you're responding, that you'd have an increased ten-minute footprint, similar to the map that I displayed.
So does your map cover the whole of the city, or how much of the city does it cover?
Sorry, I'll just get to it. What this map identifies is your current response system. So we took away your alarm handling, took away your shoot time, and that leaves two hundred and seventy-nine seconds of travel time. There's opportunities to improve those other two. That's why I can't say, what I can say right now is if you had that second fire station, that area you see in purple is what the ten-minute response zone would look like based on your existing performance. If you add more resources to that system and you enhance the segments that are, which are controllable by the fire service, which is your alarm processing and your shoot time, that footprint will become bigger.
Okay, so this map shows our existence, what we currently have, but if we had a secondary fire station? Okay, got it, thank you. You made a comment about eighty seconds, how many questions have I asked?
Two, maximum, three.
It feels like one, though, but I'll just ask one more, and then I'll, I'll wait for the next round. So you talked about eighty seconds, some sort of eighty-second metrics that, as far as you know, no, nobody's meeting. So are we setting unrealistic goals? And, and I know that we chose about seven municipalities that we kinda compare to. How many municipalities are actually meeting all of your cities within ten minutes?
Your worship, the eighty seconds is the leading practice identified in NFPA seventeen-ten for full-time fire departments, for them to dawn their protective equipment, get on a vehicle, and the wheels start turning. It has a number of factors involved in that, the layout of the building, there's the alarm initiation process, there's a number of things that go in. So in most cases, the right thing to do is to establish what are realistic measures. Right now, your service delivery policy you have, you're not meeting it. It was identified that you would do, I forget the exact measurements, Chief Martins can tell me, but you're not meeting that now. What we're suggesting in the standard of cover is that you look at that and you identify what are realistic targets, knowing that there's no fire department that we're aware of that fully meets NFPA seventeen-ten in Canada.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about the ten-minute response time, how many people are actually meeting that? How many municipalities are?
Your worship, is the context with respect to development, ten minutes? Is that what the, you're, you're interested in the developing of new neighborhood centers, ten minutes? The National Building Code, is that what we're referring to, the ten minutes, or?
I'm talking about the response time, isn't there like a, a rule to meet all fire responses within ninety? Well, I don't remember how it's said, but ten minutes and ninety percent of instances, you have to meet, get the fire processes there?
Your worship, it's up to individual municipalities to determine their response goals. I can't say right now how many that I know that meet ten minutes. I know that in British Columbia, for example, that the ten-minute for new developments was, the boundary was set, and it was applied by our planning and development and building developers, they had to comply with that. If they built outside the ten minutes, they had to do something different. That's what I can say, it's, at least in B C, and Alberta, that is the, is similar regulation. Under the Building Code says for new construction, if you're outside the ten minutes, you have to do something different. If you're asking me what fire department's performance measures are, I can tell you Calgary, for example, has an aspirational goal to meet seven minutes. But it's aspirational, and I don't believe they ever meet it. So we're looking at this, our recommendation here is to do something that's realistic.
Okay, I will come back to you later. I'm just keeping the list of everybody so that everybody gets, stay in order. Counselor Noyan, you're next.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for bringing back the report to us, for Chief Martins, for being here this afternoon, for all of our fire personnel staff in Fort Saskatchewan, for the service that you provide for, for our community. I think you're doing a wonderful job. My, my first question, I have a few questions, not related to response times, I'll come back to, to response times 'cause that's a heavy topic within this report. Section three point eight point two is Wildland Urban Interface. Can you comment on how, and this has to do with like forest proximity to, to our city and, and potential, I think, grasslands, fire risk to our city? Can you comment on, on what our, our position is like? And I appreciate that you're, you have been involved with the Fort, Fort McMurray fires. I was looking for some input on approaches that could be done, potentially in conjunction with our, our parks management team to reduce any, any risks that, that we could have in Fort Saskatchewan being in proximity to forests or grassland.
Your worship, through to Counselor Noyan, so, so yes, that is something that we've already talked about and identified in, in actually my business plan, was the Fire Smart project. And hopefully that we will have a little bit more say possibly, and how that folds out, the rolls out. Working with our neighbors as well, there are some challenges there on seeing what they're doing in comparison to what we're doing. The Fire Smart program allows us to apply for grants or develop a five-year plan and then apply for maintenance money or apply for money that we can go out and then do the actual work. So whether that's thinning or mulching and working with, with, with our, our neighbors or working within the community. And there's other programs as well that Fire Smart provides, like their Community Champion program, where you can go into different neighborhoods. We can talk to development about using different types of materials, different trees that burn slower, different type of, you know, not using the wood chippings, and just looking at the overall development piece on when we're, we're putting in different areas, parks areas too.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see too many, many details in the, in the document as submitted, so I thought I would ask about that. And, and it's good to hear where, where we kinda said, obviously, we're a different community than, say, Fort McMurray in proximity with a large amount of forests. My, my second question has to do with, it's table fifteen, incident subcategories. So this has to do with medical response calls. You compared over the past four years to twenty-seventeen, where there were seventy-six medical calls, and, and that number rose up to almost four hundred medical calls in twenty-twenty-one. And I'm asking for further detail about these medical emergencies and the, I guess, the need for a fire staff response within them. I'm correlating this topic with part of the online firefighter survey, which shows that eighty percent of respondents in the survey say public does not have a great understanding of the firefighter, sorry, of fire services and its capabilities. So do you think that we can potentially improve public awareness of, of fire services if there has been this many increase in calls? Comparing the number from twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-one, our city has not grown that almost four hundred percent compared to the medical-related calls to your department?
Your worship, through to Counselor Noyan, so something to also, when we're looking at this twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-one, in the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, and kind of into late twenty-nineteen, the city wasn't full-time fire yet. And the actual service level for the medical first responder program, the coding was updated at that time. So because we had the staff in the station, now they were able to respond to different types of code for medical first response in the city to help with some of the over-goal problems we were seeing with the ambulance issues. So that's why you're seeing the drastic increase. Twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, and probably even mid-twenty-nineteen, our, our paid-on-call members were still coming from home. And the code determinants weren't the same in that service level document than it was in twen- in twenty-nineteen.
So these are really coding-driven numbers and a change to the ambulance service level that we've seen generates what, what we're looking at?
Correct, and that's based on, you know, the, the deltas, the echos, and a time determinant that goes behind there for some Charlies. So we have Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, Echo, and we, we're looking at the Charlies on a time delay, and then the Delta and Echo calls, and that's based on, do we have an ambulance in the city? Is it further than ten minutes, then we'll go for these types of calls? We're automatically dispatched for these types of calls, and so that was all updated when the full-time model was put in place.
Alright, and just a final, final note on this. Have all said, so in twenty-twenty-one, I think, with that four hundred medical calls, were all these, but in, in, in your opinion or through, through data, like, that, that has needed, needed fire response to those calls?
So how, how we do it here, we are medically trained and we respond on the, the engine, the fire truck squad, to these medical calls, and those call determinants, yes, I would, we were needed for, for all of those. Those are the worst day of a citizen, and the ambulance wasn't available, or there was a time delay, and we went to provide that service. In twenty-twenty-two, that number is four hundred and thirty-one, so we've increased again, just based on the calls and the types that we've been dealing with.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll put you back in the queue with everybody else. Counselor Kelly, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Catcher, and thank you, gentlemen, for the report. In general, I found the report quite comprehensive, and tremendous amount of detail and information. Having said that, though, there was some things that truly caught my attention. There's been some discussion through the prior questions about the shoot time. I understand that absolute shoot time can be affected by building design, for instance. But building design doesn't explain the increase in shoot time in Fort Saskatchewan for fire calls. So what's driving the increased, Fire Martins, or the increased shoot time in Fort Saskatchewan over the last couple of years?
Your worship.
And you could add to that, please, what are we doing to remedy that?
Your worship, through to Counselor Kelly, so I guess there, our fire department members aren't just sitting next to the fire truck. They are, they're in station, yes, but they're also doing fire inspections. So they're going out and doing the initial inspection, they're, they're training, there's calls that come in. They have to do, you know, truck tracks, equipment maintenance on all of the equipment. And so at any time, sometimes they might not even be in the station. They could be doing a fire inspection in the middle of the hospital, which could take them two minutes to run down the stairs, or they could be in the middle of the jail, or some of the bigger box stores that we do inspections at, the higher-risk places, that affects our response times. If we're across doing training on the other side of the city, that increases our, the shoot time possibly. And it's those types of things that, that we are looking at. So most recently, you know, we've looked at moving all the frontline apparatus closer to the sleeping quarters in the station so that we, we have the ability to get out of that area, out of the training room, out of the kitchen area, the offices quicker to get on those frontline apparatus and move everything that is second and third due further out in the station. Ultimately, you're right, we're, we're looking at increasing that. Some of the other problems and challenges that we see is, is that dispatch time that we spoke to. We're waiting on critical information. The pre-alert could go off, so that's basically when the building is toned. We might not have any information except for, you're going to a cardiac arrest, and that's urgent. But we don't have an address yet, we don't have any of the location or any updated information. So sometimes our members actually are dressed, standing next to the truck, waiting for that information to come in For that information to come in because we just don't know which direction to head.
Okay, just before you go on, Counselor Kelly, so I know it's it's you want to talk to him up there. But if you talk to him up there, you're actually talking to him as opposed to talking to the wall. Okay, thank you. So go on, Counselor Kelly.
And with respect. Mr. Martins, you indicated problems with issue time. But the corrective actions you proposed indicate to me different problems than you discussed in your response. And I'm not asking for an answer today, but I would have thought that with two years' experience with our fire full time or three years now, whatever it is, with a full time fire department or. Career fire department, that our shoot time would be going down, not up. And I'll leave it at that for now, we don't need to beat it up today, but I I think we're going to have to address it sometime in the fairly near future. This is, I'd like to refer the the consultant to page twenty two of their report. And Counselor Abbott, and it's the paragraph near the top that's in italics. Counselor Abbott toy touched on that. I had it circled and read because I absolutely did not understand what it meant. And and with respect, when I listen to the response, I still don't understand. So so what precisely was the purpose for putting this particular paragraph in this report?
This, the second comment was simply, your worship was simply to provide further substantiation. Based on the data that we had received to do the Fire Master Plan. And that this was a recurring observation that was also made in the twenty twenty fire writers. Report, it was all it is is saying, here's the data we found was that the Fort Saskatchewan Fire Department is not meeting its ten minute response in ninety percent. In accordance with the building code. And it was, it's going to be further complicated as growth goes on. And validation regarding that goes back to twenty twenty. And the same analysis or similar analysis done by the fire underwriters. It's simply a supporting comment from a previous study, and I felt that it had relevance in. In substantiating what our findings were.
And I won't argue that point or debate that with you. It's not understandable. When they talk about fifteen sixty percent after adding a second fire hall, you can imagine that council might have some concerns about that. And Counselor Abbott toy addressed that, so we'll leave it at that for now. I think I've got one more, Mayor Catcher, and then, of course, please put me on the list again. Counselor Noian opened up the question of the medical calls. And Fire Chief Martin referred to the medical training that our fire crews have. And it was also numerous times in the report suggested that that we set a policy based upon our risk. And 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 the risk analysis makes infinite sense to me. If our medical calls are truly a risk. Then then what medical training? Do our responders have and what types of medical treatment can they provide once they arrive on scene? Please be specific.
Your your worship through to Counselor Kelly, so. Our our service level policy has us at standard first aid. However, I'd say about fifty percent of the department is currently at advanced first aid. And we have a number of members, roughly about ten, that are actually a higher level. That they've either either worked on an ambulance previous places and still hold that accreditation. So, you know, primary care paramedic or primary care paramedic advanced. And so those are the levels that we kind of have, we kind of have a a range of all that, which is is listed in that. Medical first responder service level that we have set up with Alberta Health Services.
Well, I haven't seen the the agreement that you have with Alberta Health Services. I don't know if council has. Again, specifically, though, what type of treatment can you offer a patient when you arrive at the call?
Your worship through to Counselor Kelly, so. Based on the scope of work of the individual of of that time and what we have laid out, so we can do oxygen, bandaging, trauma. You know, controlling any type of trauma, depending on the type of rescue, we could be performing C spine. Cardiac arrests, you know, CPR, airway control, different types of members have the ability, again. To step up if an ambulance is there and help out under their scope, which is covered by the province, so that could be IVs, that could be. Helping with an airway, so those are the types of that we would have for training. Yes.
I'm sorry, please continue.
Sorry, and and the other one is 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 Narcan or Naloxone for drug overdose. There's about a hundred, sorry, there's about fourteen hundred or fifteen hundred. Call criterias that we go through when we look at that service level for medical first response. Everything from shortness of breath to to electrical to, you know, cardiac arrest, a man down, a citizen assist, that's all in those code determinants. Which is given to Alberta Health Services as well as Strathcona County Dispatch.
Okay, thank you, and that helps, that truly does. I I didn't realize that it was that extensive, so. One last question and then.
No, actually, I'm going to move on. You've had. More than three, so I'll come back to you, you'll go back into the rotation with everyone else. So Counselor Harris, you're next. Yep, you're live.
In looking at the comparators, I understand the city of Spruce Grove is not included because they have an integrated department, correct? Where they are actually paramedics and firefighters. We obviously provide that service through a contract with an ambulance service provider. If we look at the costs for that particular product or service that we we get. What's the value that different municipalities have made to have an integrated service where? Where and we were just talking about that from a service, you know, in terms of responding to to need. So ultimately, in Strathcona County, for example, their firefighters roll with their trucks. And if they have to open an airway or do whatever they have to do, they can do it, correct? So is there some value for looking at that in the long term in terms of a level of service that we would aspire to as an aspirational goal? I I respect the job that the firefighters do to to fight fires, and that's incredibly dangerous, and you wouldn't catch me doing that because it would scare the bejesus out of me. But if we look at the long term, net net of the cost, is there any value in looking that over an aspirational goal?
Your worship, that is an extremely complex question. I can tell you the ten years I was the chief of Fort McMurray were an integrated service where we ran the ambulance service out of the fire stations. I can't say, I can't give a source of the data, but the the metrics that I remember was that you're about one third more efficient. For your fire and your ambulance service when you integrate them, because they're under the same infrastructure, the the same groups that show up to a multiple emergency, whether a car accident has material spill fire. You usually have police or should say ambulance and fire there where you have a big bang for your buck when you have them both coming under the same organization. Now, having said that, there's been a struggle in Alberta for years with how that works, starting back to a a report in the late nineties. Where this the province wanted to take over the ambulance service and contracted to municipalities and. And Airdrie is an example, the contract that was Spruce Grove contract where we are somewhat familiar with because we did their master plan a number of years ago. And there are some restrictions in that where they can't use the firefighters for firefighting when they're tied to the ambulance. Loaded question, I can't give you a direct answer, except to say, when you're fully integrated, it works well. And as long as the there's not a lot of contractual restrictions or funding challenges, which I could say for any service, but that's my experience, that's the best I can give you.
So so that leads me to the second question along that line is. What's the appropriate time? Now, this is a master plan that will obviously as a council work with administration and I guess within your context, your recommendations. To define what we have to do by way of service level modifications, increases most likely, and cost increases that will will be attendant to that. But when is an appropriate time to start looking at respecting the fact that we are a sophisticated municipality? We're as sophisticated in many respects as the city of Spruce Grove, but they made that decision at some point in the past. To to ultimately have an integrated service. So not to belabor the thing, and I realize it's a complicated question. When is a a good time to start that process? We've got to walk before we can run. When when would you think that that would be a good time to do?
Your worship, Counselor Harris asked really, really good questions. The way I would see it as a as a longtime Fire Chief. If council was getting a lot of feedback from the citizens at the ambulance service that they have, either contract or where it wasn't working well. And then was tasking administration to build a business case to take that over as part of an Alberta Health Services contract. That would be the opportunity to do that. I believe that's the situation in Airdrie, if I'm not mistaken. And I understand that there was a lot of challenges with that separation where they contracted out their service. It would be triggered by your citizens saying to you they're dissatisfied and asking administration if there's a better way to do it.
Yeah, I don't think there's any dissatisfaction that I've heard with our ambulance service. I'm just asking the rhetorical question of. If we look at the overall expansion of the level of service with a with a dedicated and a well resourced firefighting complement. How do we ensure that they ultimately are continuing to add value in our community? And it doesn't necessarily have to be by way of complaint, it's a question, how do we proactively look at the best level of service going forward? So I know that's a loaded question and and I'll probably come back to it another time. I've got to read the report at least a couple more times. I mean, there's a lot of stuff there. You know, I I realize it's an iterative process and we will build on it going forward, so thank you for what you guys have done and.
I wish I could conclude this by saying that the Medical First Responder Program is a relatively low cost, high value public service. When the ambulance is predisposed, the firefighters that are in the station have the capacity, basically, you're using existing capacity to help somebody when they're in dire need. The higher acuity calls is what should be the first responder program as Chief Martins laid out. But for the amount of training, the equipment, it is a high valued, low cost service for the public. And it augments the provincial system, and I get there's a big argument about the service levels in for analysis at the provincial level.
Okay, so top of the round, so I'm at the top, so my question I think is going to go to Chief Martins. So as the city transitioned from. Standby or paid on call or volunteer firefighters. So as the model was implemented, I have to ask the question, okay, so with all the thought process that was put into. A, the model and B, everything that was being done, I have to ask the question, what happened with the emergency management position that we used to have a long time ago? What happened to the training? What happened to the deputy fire chief? Because I know over the years they've existed, I just don't know where they went. So as the thought process happened, a lot of these things that they're talking about. Used to be done, I mean, mechanical used to be done in house by our our own people. We used to do pre emergency planning, we used to respond to a more alarm component. So with all of those, how did we end up now in this report saying none of this is is done? So is the model wrong? I guess that's the question or or.
Chief Martins, did you want me to take this one? We originally came to counsel your worship a couple of years ago with an interim pilot project for a Director of Emergency Management. And that Director of Emergency Management started in February of the year of the pandemic. So that Director of Emergency Management came through and became the Director of our ECC and carried us through the two years of the pandemic. And then what we did is we moved the emergency management position to the fire department. To see how it could be incubated and what we needed to do going forward from an emergency management perspective. And so we were likely going to come forward with an ask for emergency management, and we are just, we simply have a vacancy right now for our deputy fire chief. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, so within that, then, are you telling me the the money is sitting there for the deputy fire chief? And the money is sitting there for the emergency position that that we already had?
The money is sitting there, your worship, for the deputy fire chief, it is not there for emergency management.
So where did that money go?
It was only a temporary pilot for two years, it was one time money.
Okay, and with regards to all of the rest of the stuff, the training, the alarms, like all of that, I guess that goes to you.
Your worship, so part of the mechanical is still done, it's just it's only a certain portion. So our mechanics are still working on on, I guess, the chassis and 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 the motor piece of our fire trucks. But our mechanics don't work on the pump side of the fire truck, so what we supply our water to for our hose lines. So they don't have the training to work on the pump, so that's what the recommendation was for the twenty five thousand dollars to get certified. So they could work on our pumps for our current trucks, so we contract that out to a third party to come in and service all of our trucks annually. That's been an ongoing practice here for many, many years for the pump side of the fire truck. As far as some of the other stuff. We're trying to now do a lot of it on shift. And when we have members on shift working and then we have to now pay them overtime and we have to, they're on days off to get them other training now. It's it's sometimes hard to recall them for whether it's mandatory training or not mandatory training. So there, you know, there were some benefits on the paid on call side for having training come in and do it all at once and getting a few. Groups of people over a number of times. Now we're we're trying to do it on shift mostly, and if we can't capture it on shift. Then we're saving it to next year or we're trying to capture it through overtime costs and bringing someone in to relieve them.
Okay, that answers a whole bunch of those questions. So I guess my next question is to Ms. Smith, probably, yeah, your public works and mechanics. So as they're talking about saying add twenty five or thirty thousand, have the mechanic certified. Do we actually have the capacity if if that were approved? Or is that going to impact the mechanic side of it and then all of a sudden we're going to get asked for another mechanic?
Through your worship, that is something that we would have to take away and review.
Okay, I'm just trying to flesh out all the answers to these, so I'll stick with my two questions, I'll move on. Counselor Macon, you are next.
Think I need three questions to get me through this section. Okay, so recommendation six and eleven, just to be clear, those those together are requesting three inspectors total. Correct, I'm reading that right?
Recommendation six is for two full time safety codes officers. And you said recommendation.
Eleven.
Eleven? The what we're saying here is you could expand your Q M P to include risk base and cyclical inspections. With the establishment of your fire inspector of the two that we've identified.
Okay, so that kind of connecting to number six, okay, so it's not a third, okay. So although I understand that there is a backlog log of inspections, do we believe then that we have sixteen hours worth of inspections into forever? That need to be attended to? Right, we're talking about two full time positions every day, eight hours, so two people, so sixteen hours a day into forever. To accomplish this safety and inspection work.
Your worship through to Counselor Macon, so. We would be busy probably for the first. Your worship through to councillor Macon, so we would be busy probably for the first, you know, four to five years. Our current QMP is basically stating we need to inspect certain businesses annually. We need to inspect other businesses at different times. And the challenge of doing that on shift is just that it's shift work for our current members. It's not just going out and doing initial inspection. It's then coming back, writing up orders if there's deficiencies. It's then following up again, did they comply with the orders that were issued? And then coming back again if we had to issue fines or anything like that or shut them down. So it's a lot of that follow-up piece and the continuity. When you have our staff off for five days is that business continuity is lost. It's hard to give that inspection to somebody else and say, here, you follow up now and then give it to a third person, the third rotation to follow up on. And then the other challenge we have is not all of our staff are trained to the level of the safety codes parameters. And that's a lot of work that's regulated by the province. And it takes a lot of courses and then ongoing annual training that you have to be competent to do the inspection piece.
Okay, so then I guess my question to follow up to that then is hypothetically. So I think like going through this, obviously, like I agree with Mr. Fleming when he says there is a case, right? That investment needs to be made in the fire department, right? And so as a member of council, I'm looking at this going, you know, we, like, I agree that we can't put 14 positions in one year, right? So how do we do it responsibly? How do we do it in a way that the taxpayer can handle? And so I'm looking at the positions and in my head, not working in the fire department. So I don't know, and you can just tell me flat out that councillor Macon, that doesn't work. But if we were to say, like, take the first step and do two more firefighters and two more paid-on-call in the first year, right? Can you have one of those people, one of those members or somebody at the hall being somebody that like if we were to hire one safety inspector and have one person at the hall that is, that can continue to work with that person. And then they can theoretically, in my, the way my brain works, that truck can roll out to the call. And then that member can come from the safety inspection in a truck and meet them there at the same time. And you're still having the appropriate amount of people arrive on scene. But allows us some efficiency when we're trying to look at all of these positions that are being requested.
Your worship through to councillor Macon, so yes, you hit a lot of great points. And that's the stuff that we'd be looking at. So, you know, it does recommend you, but when we come back and flush a few more things out, maybe that recommendation is the one. And our on-shift members still continue doing the initial fire inspection. Some other places I've worked even was you would try to accomplish two to three a day fire inspections. And then that was submitted to the full-time safety codes inspector to do all the follow-up and the orders. So that would be something that we would look at moving forward and coming back to council.
Awesome. Great answer. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor Blizzard?
Well, I'm going to touch, go back to councillor Harris touched on with the integrated services. I definitely see some benefits, but are there risks? And I guess one of the risks that I could see is the way ambulance works right now is if an ambulance leaves Fort Saskatchewan, gets into Edmonton, drops off a patient at a hospital, and then they're in Edmonton. They end up being in that zone and getting called there. So if we had our own integrated services, that's still going to happen? Like, is that where, are we going to be safer that they get to come back here because there are ambulance-integrated and possible firefighter?
Your worship through to councillor Blizzard, you are correct. So we'd be then signing up for an agreement with Alberta Health Services. They mandate, again, how many are on that ambulance and where they go. So they would be sucked into, we can ask our partners next door on some of the challenges that they're seeing with the new system and the approach they've done, their overtime costs. I think they brought on 12 this year because of those costs. So when we look at that, that you're correct on saying they wouldn't just be dropping off and becoming, they could be in Le Mans, Gibbons, the whole region. And some of the other challenges, if we would look at that, it's not just simply review and look at level of service. But if that would be council's decision, we'd also have to look at it, when are some of these contracts coming due? I know the city of Lethbridge signed for 10 years, so it'd be hard to even get in to then provide that service. I don't know what Red Deer is at, but I think some of, they're trying to do longer contracts with the providers that are currently in place.
Okay, just had a thought, now it was gone. So looking at it differently, this fire services master plan, this is maybe, I'm not even sure who this would go to. If, when it comes back, if we were to accept it, are we accepting every recommendation? Are we going through some of these recommendations and going here, a bit of priority in them? How, what's going to go forward? And I don't know if this is for you guys or for.
Address that to Mr. Fleming.
Yes, through your worship, again, administration would come back with a bit of an action plan for council's consideration. So we would, we would sort of recommend what we see as being a good path forward. And council at that point can weigh in whether or not that's the direction that they want us to go. Even still, on an annual basis, council controls for anything here that's financial in nature. Council always has the opportunity through the annual budget process to continue with or vary from an action plan that gets discussed anyhow. So the path forward and the pace at which we follow up on this is really in council's hands.
Okay, so this is called the Fire Services Master Plan, but is this staying the way it is? Are we taking it? Will there be amendments to it? Or are we kind of adopting it with some limitations or some things said?
Yes, through your worship, you actually make a good point. I'm not sure that I see this document itself as being the master plan. I look at it more as guidance for us to use to make an action plan with instead. A lot of times when we bring reports to council that are referred to as master plans, we would ask council to adopt that and essentially that would be the guidance administration uses for future budgets. But in this case, like I said, we did want that sort of third-party assessment aspect to this. And so we didn't want to get in there and sort of bring you administration's version of a master plan. We wanted an outside third party to really give us some guidance.
Okay, thank you. That's all for now.
Okay, and you don't have to, but I'm just going to keep going through the order until we get through all the questions. So everyone stays in order. Councillor Abatoye?
Just want to take a moment to really appreciate all the work you guys have done. Obviously, reports has been very well written and thank you to the fire department as well for all your hard work. I guess I had to kind of prepare the floor before I ask my next question. So when you were doing your presentation, one of your project's goals was to enhance, is enhance cost control and containment. And so my question to you is, how is adding 14 new full-time positions cost control?
Your worship, the overall scope of the master plan is to look at your current risks and your services and how your system is performing. One of the project's goals was to identify gaps. We found that you have gaps in meeting your existing policy and assembling an effective response force. So based on that, you know, there's options is you reduce your service levels by the standard to cover. You mandate the fire chief to only provide certain coverage levels. Like, for example, in British Columbia, you can be restricted to external operations, which means you don't have firefighters going into burning buildings to rescue people. You have the authority to do that, to pick the service level, and that would be the cost containment. In this case, our opinion is that based on all the things that we studied in Fort Saskatchewan, you need to increase your staffing model, change your staffing model so that you have a consistent, effective response force that offsets the limitations of your paid-on-call model and meets the risk of the community. Somewhere in there, there is an answer to the question of how can I say cost containment when we're looking at a $1.3 million increase? That $1.3 million increase is what we believe the service level of Fort Saskatchewan Fire Department should be in order to protect the citizens and based upon the risk. And your worship, I hope you answered your question because I didn't think I answered your question last time.
That's okay. Let's just move on. That was kind of a philosophical question, but. My second question is about fire hydrants, and I think that question would go to Mr. Martin. Or how you addressed, I'm sorry. No, no, Chief Martin, sorry. That's what I was going to say. Fire hydrants, so we have areas in the city that we do not have fire hydrants. How are we dealing with fire? Do we ever get calls there and what has happened?
Your worship through to councillor Abatoye, so yes, we do have areas in the city that aren't hydrant protected. And we would rely on our neighbors to bring their tenders or tankers, so big trucks with water. We would respond initially and that would be either through automatic aid or mutual aid, depending on the size of the fire and where it was at.
Okay, so the recommendation is to get fire hydrants in those areas, right? That's what the recommendation is saying. That wasn't a question, that's okay. Just, let's just move on. My final question is just around, just looking at the numbers of incidences and just looking at probability. So frequency versus severity, and it looks like 9% are the actual fire incidences and everything else is, you know, other things. And so I feel like when it comes to severity, that's where severity will be. So it feels like for 9% of all total incidences, we are asking for 14 new full firefighters. I'm just wondering, like, is it, what's the question? I'm trying to figure out the right way to put it so it doesn't seem insensitive. But is it really worth putting all that money for 9% of the total incidences that we have? It's to you, Mr. Consultant.
Your worship, I understand the question is if only 9% of the Fort Saskatchewan Fire Department responses are working fires, why do we need to add more people?
Well, I'm not saying, I understand that we need more people.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, but 1.6 million, that is a 4% property tax increase. So how am I going to explain that to my residents? That's my question. How do I justify that?
Your worship, I can, I just go back to the evaluation, we did your community risk assessment and the current services. I believe you had a major fire back in November, if I'm not mistaken. Chief Martins might be able to, and he struggled to get firefighters there to control that fire. Is that correct, Chief Martins?
That's correct. There was a few fires where we struggled with, yes.
So the converse argument would be is if you lost a three-story walk-up apartment building as part of the growth in the city, would it then be a different discussion about how many firefighters? Because typically that's what happens, you wait to a major event and then all of a sudden is, well, why don't we have more firefighters?
Okay, make it short.
So thank you for your response, but I just remember the, one of the comments that was made was that fire doubles every 30 seconds. Now, for me, the most important thing is that no life is lost. And this is very personal to me because I lost my mom in a fire, so it's very personal to me. But I have to make sense of this, right? So for every 30 seconds, fire doubles, and we're trying to get the firefighters there in 10 minutes. And maybe I'm just, maybe this is not a question, right? I'm just, I just feel like this is a little aggressive, right? And I think that we'll get there eventually, but I don't think I have any question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Noyan?
Yeah, thank you. I want to dive in a little bit to the recommendation for a training facility. I'm trying to get my head around the benefit that we would really gain in Fort Saskatchewan. For me, even considering this option, I do understand how that could pull members of the department away to go outside. I didn't know Gibbons was one. I think Spruce Grove was just the only one emphasized in the report or considered in the report. So during a fire training day, and maybe you can paint me a bit of a picture. So there are going to be, say, you know, maybe half, like, let's just think about it like that. Half the firefighters are attending the training day, half are on-call, they're working a shift. They're not going to get pulled away from training, I don't think, to go fight a fire, even if they were in Fort Saskatchewan. Would I be correct in saying that?
Your worship to councillor Noyan, so we could be called back depending on the size of the fire. And again, that's, that's the risk that we're taking now is we're taking half of our paid-on-calls and some of our full-time out of the city, which is what is, what we're relying on for our second apparatus and third apparatus to respond to fire calls. So when we do that, we're actually really, really reducing our numbers by taking 12 to 15 people out of the city with equipment, trucks, you know, bunker gear, the RSCBA. We're taking it about 45 minutes to an hour away to do the training. So then we're really limited, and then once I get this group trained, I have to get this group trained. And that could be based on paid-on calls, they all work 40, 50 hours somewhere else. That could take me six, seven months to do, plus get the full-time rotated in there, which is there's an overtime cost for them as well. Because now they've already worked their four days or five-day shift. So it takes quite a bit of time, whereas if the facility was in-house, we have the ability to do that training on shift and have things set up so that if we had a call, we still can cut away. It might eat into a little bit of our shoot time and response time, but it's not going to eat into by an hour. It's going to be minutes.
Right, okay, that gives me a bit better understanding of what happens during these training days. So it's not possible, what you're saying, to send one or two firefighters for training at once. They use equipment that, up Fort Saskatchewan's equipment, and that's best practice. That's not something that they can completely do at another location without accessing our equipment. Okay, yeah, didn't know that. My second topic, it goes into 10-minute response time a little bit. So we have theoretical travel time, that's considered, and there's an equation in this report for calculating theoretical travel time. My first question about this is going to be, Fort Saskatchewan recently changed speed limits on many main roadways. Were the new speed limits considered in calculation of travel time or the old speed limits? And then also follow up to that, how do speed limits affect the calculation of this travel time?
Your worship, the actual calculations are included in one of the appendices of the report. And it's what our standard GIS, it's a coefficient that we use that averages what, how fast a fire truck can move through a suburban and urban area. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but the, all the criteria that we used was in that analysis. And our GIS department worked closely with the city's GIS department to evaluate the response times based on the existing road network.
Okay, sorry, and then can you just answer in one word then, like, does that have to do with speed limits or no? That's GIS system tracking and that's it?
It does.
It does, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that, and I didn't catch that part of the report. And then a follow-up to this topic is, at the 10-minute response times, if we've been beyond in the last year, let's say that's in recent memory, how many fires have, would you say have been critical at that 10 minutes? And this is looking on actual, actual fire events that are incidents that have occurred?
Your worship through to councillor, I don't have the exact map in my brain to say exactly this fire was out and this fire was in. I'm not sure if we have it in the master plan or not. We'd have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just something that I was considering that was going through my head when reading this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're back to councillor Kelly.
Yes, thank you. One, I think, specific point I'd like to make, and then I'm going to ramble on a bit with some generalities. Mr. Martins, there's a recommendation in there that was not discussed as part of the presentation about the inadequacy of the foam equipment on our pumper. How long have those pumbers been in service, please?
Your worship through to councillor Kelly, close to two years, just over two years now.
And I know that you're new and you're inheriting some of this stuff. So if I sound frustrated, please don't take it personally. I remember being on council when, when the purchase was recommended to council. So I'm a little frustrated that two years after we've owned them, council is informed that this stuff isn't working and that the remedy is to talk to the manufacturer. Certainly, we've talked to the manufacturer on this by now.
Your worship through to councillor Kelly, you are correct. We have talked to the manufacturer. And we've made, we've made a lot of progress. It's just taken a long time. We were in the middle of COVID still. We had to fly up someone from California. We flew in. We were in the middle of COVID still. Um, we had to fly up someone from California. We flew in someone from Winnipeg. We flew in the foam manufacturer from, from Winnipeg as well, and another gentleman. So we have been working through the process, um, some parts, anywhere from, you know, three months to, to six months away. We had some challenges with the weather, or we froze some uh, uh, things, which then affected us again. So we had to, we had to look at some of those issues. So you're, you're absolutely right. The frustration's on our side as well. But we have been working through um the problem. And um, I, I will say that one of the trucks is, is working. Um, and, and we're still um working on the second truck. Um, and we're just, again, waiting on, on, on certain parts or actuators um and injectors for that truck.
So if I just heard you correctly, the foam system is working correctly on one unit but not the other?
That is correct.
Mayor Catcher, does that count as two questions before I continue?
You can have another one. That was a short one.
Some speakers have had as many as five questions. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'd like to, there was a comment made by the consultant that, that caught my ear. It, it's setting our own policy. And I remember again, sitting on council as a new counselor. In fact, we had a new council for the most part, and, and our current policy, fire policy was brought to us. And I'd, I'd be deadly honest, and that's part of why I, I might sound so frustrated with, with, with what goes on here, is I completely did not understand that policy. Um, it made reference to a whole bunch of NFPA standards that I, of course, had absolutely no clue about. And now I'm told that we're not meeting our policy. And that's not Mr. Martin's fault. That's, it's. So there was a comment made, and, and, and that was a bit of a preamble, about setting your policy to restrict your firefighters to external operations only. And that's really touched to the quick of some of the thoughts I've had. So I wonder if the consultant could just elaborate on that for a little bit. What exactly did you mean when you made that reference?
Uh, your worship, that's a, a reference to the uh BC uh Fire Marshal playbook. And what it was, it identified competency-based service levels, which um would be applicable to smaller fire departments that can't uh afford the type of training and equipment to become full service. There's uh external, internal, and full service, uh, or in, interior, exterior, and full service categories. And each municipality in BC had to declare what its service level was. The point that I was uh, was making was the authority having jurisdictions in terms of setting the service levels is up to council. And uh, I don't, we, we wouldn't recommend that in a city the size of Fort Saskatchewan to go to external operations only. I was merely using the example of how municipalities can set their service levels, uh, and that's what that was about. In your service policy, it says that you identifies uh three goals. A fire engine with three firefighters will arrive at emergency within ten minutes ninety percent of the time. You're achieving that eighty-three percent of the time. A fire supervisor will arrive with a command vehicle within ten minutes ninety percent of the time. That supervisor is now coming at two minutes after the initial uh ten-minute response. Uh, meet full deployment resource required for structural fires within six minutes of initial arriving apparatus ninety percent of the time. Your initial alarm assignment, the first engine is, as I said, eleven minutes. And this is not a bad service level in terms of response time that you're at eighty-three percent. The, the other factor of this is your staffing level, your effective response force, when you're showing up with three firefighters. I hope I answered the question. I do know I do uh go on sometimes, and I'm trying not to.
And I appreciate the, the additional information, the additional color. Um, I wanna build on this. By Mayor Catcher, I don't need to be interrupted. I'll wait and come back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Harris.
So it was touched on earlier that the, the title of this particular report prepared by um the consultants is Fire Service Master Plan. So in reality, it's Fire Services um Evaluation, Review and Evaluation. And ultimately, it can help to inform the creation of a master plan to deliver the right resources in the right way at the right time. Is that a fair assessment?
Your worship, yes, that would be.
Yeah, um, I, I've had personal uh experience developing major reviews of municipal services, particularly in the city of Calgary through their zero-based review model. You're familiar with that?
Uh, your worship, uh, we were part of that zero-based review for the Calgary Fire Department.
And, and I was aware that you were. So, so I had the same, same opportunity. So, so I was involved in the review of the Road Services Department of the city of Calgary, big, big operating department. So we didn't call it a master plan, but we called it a service review. And ultimately, we created a number of recommendations similar to what you've done here around their select services. This, that, that was more specific. This is more global in relation to the broader response to emergency response, fire, you know, that sort of stuff. So, so the question is to, I guess, Mr. Fleming. So do you see, then see taking these recommendations, ordering those in, in some context, and then bringing those back in a meaningful way, um, uh, so that we can just bring some order to it? Because it's way too big, it's way too complicated. Um, the ability of the seven of us up here to simulate all of this stuff is a challenge, because this is a major um component of any budget review or any service level review. So what, what sort of timelines? Can you refresh my memory in terms of being able to um bring some order to, to all of this data and information? And it's great. It's, it has to be done. And uh, it should have been done earlier, but the window of opportunity is upon us, so now we can put it into play. So what's your timelines?
Uh, yes, through your worship, I'll, I'll just, I'll answer yes to your initial question. That was our intent to come back with some, with some sort of an action plan. Um, I'll maybe see if Chief Martin wants to speak to the timeline that he had in mind um about when that might occur.
Your worship through to Counselor Harris, so this would be one of my priorities and, and um, you know, sooner than later. Like, as you mentioned, um, you know, we're starting budget again and, and getting, um, you know, looking at all of our service levels and, and budget documents. So this would be a priority for myself to, to see how we can come back with, with um recommendations and, and, and simplify the document.
Yeah, in the situation that I had in Calgary, when we identified a series of recommendations for improved delivery of those particular services, similar to what would be here, um, administration then responded to those and either agreed, disagreed, or qualified or equivocated relative to the recommendations that we had identified. Do you anticipate that there's a response to some of these that you either agree, don't agree with, or ultimately you find a way to implement them in a different way? What, what's your kind of game plan on that?
Your worship through to Counselor Harris, you are correct. And it was um kind of my answer to Counselor Macon about the safety codes positions that, you know, we look at possibly implementing the one position first and, and seeing how that actually position works with some of the full-time inspections with on-shift staff. And then um that second recommendation position could be a couple of years down the road. So we would take a look at all the recommendations that Bear's provided us and, and again, look at workload and costing and, and come back with the level of service document that's provided and have those discussions.
Okay, and so back to the timing question, that's hasn't.
This is a priority, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna start, I know I'm gonna start moving people along. Um, so I guess uh, last question that, that I'm gonna have, have with you guys is when you talk about life cycle. So A, the apparatus, I thought we already had a life cycle replacement for that. And then B, the, the fire trucks, is that based on years or is it based on hours? So the, the apparatus, because you're saying that obviously we're not doing it and we used to?
Your worship, y- you are correct. We have a life cycle replacement for um a mo- majority of our equipment. The recommendation from Bear is just to, to look at um our, our trucks. And um, we're, we're running a lot of our equipment to that twenty years. And then um taking um two years to, to build it, so now we're twenty-two years, possibly twenty-three years in um with an apparatus. So um, the recommendations from Bear are basically looking at, at your trucks and maybe staggering some of your trucks, so they cycle a quicker. Frontline apparatus, maybe fifteen years, you start specking your trucks earlier, so that when they are up to be, so when they are ready to be moved from a frontline or second line, um, we're not stuck in replacing a whole fleet at once.
Okay, so I'm gonna save the rest of my questions, because I could probably go on and on. But uh, as this comes back uh with recommendations from administration, I think that's probably the better, better time to get into the discussion and debate with it. I will have one final question. I'm gonna ask it at the very end. Okay, Counselor Macon?
I have two more questions, and then thanks to all of your questions, also, I think that I'll be done. So uh, first of all, to say thank you so much for bearing with us today. Lots of questions and lots of uh great uh dialogue back and forth, so I really appreciate that. My first question then is, um, I was talking to somebody who was telling me that another municipality has a medical response unit. So it's a unit provided by the municipality that sends um the municipally-owned um medical unit to responses when the, when, say, Medavive can't get there in time, rather than have the fire crew go. And I'm just wondering if we have um heard about this, thought about it, if there's like efficiencies to be had in something like that? Or if you believe, no, we're handling the medicals, calls pretty good within um our capacity?
Your worship through to Counselor Macon, so for what our level of services that we provide through the MFR program, we're handling what we can correctly. Our, our, our team is doing a great job. That's not me. That's, that's the guys and gals behind me. So um, as far as that unit, I, it possibly is uh our partners next door. And that, I, from what I understand, maybe uh that's um, an ambulance or a pickup truck is, that would be fully funded from the municipality. I know that's similar to Strathcona County, what they're running. Um, uh, I can't remember the actual name of it, um, but they are, that unit is staying in the city um, and going to calls and dealing with it, and then other units are coming to transport. The city of Edmonton is utilizing um a different model. They're looking at some of their busier stations running um like a pickup truck with two members on it to some of their medical calls. But we're talking about thousands and thousands of calls um in, in certain areas there. So there are different ways to do it. Um, I think for the size of our community and how we're doing it currently is, is effective.
Okay, awesome. And then um, I'm not really sure that this has to do with the master plan, but just in wrapping my head around fire services, I do, I was just curious if we have a good system in place with our um paid-on calls to know um when they are not available. Like, so we know when they pick up calls and when they are available, but let's say we have a big structure of fire and we do an all-call only to find that three out of twenty-five of them are available. So do we have a system in place that identifies those um shortfalls when they happen?
Your, your worship through to Counselor Macon, so we, we do have a, a system. Again, it, it's based on, on the member and their availability. If they um key into the app, if they're around, like some members key into their app that they're uh not on or off. So you can see who's, who the members are that are in town. Um, however, we do have some challenges um with that program. You can see where members are then in the city, and there's some privacy concerns. But as far as the responding, you're right. We, we don't know who's coming and, and when. And when that goes off, we, we hope that we have ten or twenty-nine show up. So um, it's very limited to, to that. Um, we've also looked at some standby um, um previously to see um if there is interest in our staff coming in to, to be on standby um and be paid a, a wage and, and be at home. And then back to, I think it was another counselor that mentioned, you have to be within fifteen minutes of the station and, um, or twenty minutes. We did look at that. Um, we, we tried it a few different times throughout the year. Um, there was thirty-six shifts available and one member signed up.
Okay, awesome. Well, I appreciate the responses and uh thank you for everything today.
Okay, thank you. So we're on round three. Counselor Blizzard, anything else? You're good. Counselor Abatoye, anything else?
See, I see Counselor Kelly there, so I was hoping he would ask his question. I'm just gonna ask it anyway, because he, um. So do we know how much it's gonna cost us if we, if we implemented all twenty-seven recommendations? What kind of budget increase that will be?
Your worship, we didn't calculate uh the entire uh budgetary impact. We know what the staffing estimates are. And uh, you know, the, the other, we put in costs where we knew we, we were in a rough order of magnitude, but we didn't put a total together.
I've got Mr. Fleming back there.
Yeah, through your worship, and just, and it just assumes, of course, that I'm reading all the aspects of the report correctly. So take it with a grain of salt, but I was just working a calculator here uh a little while ago. And it, it looks to me like the ongoing amount of fully implementing everything, excluding the operating cost of a fire hall, which weren't in this report, uh, would be around, somewhere around two-point-two to two-point-five million dollars of ongoing additional uh cost. So that gets you the eighteen additional members and the uh fire inspectors and the deputy chief positions and whatnot.
Thank you very much. Counselor Noian, anything further?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, to reference NFPA seventeen-twenty versus seventeen-ten. Obviously, this is a two-hundred-and-sixteen-page document. I've reviewed it, I think, three times before this meeting, and I, I plan to do so and, and before future discussions on this. But are, does seventeen-twenty more applied to Fort Saskatchewan's model of, of fire service? Is, is, is that what I heard you say towards the beginning of your presentation?
The uh, your worship, the NFPA models can be uh used interchangeably. In this case, you're a composite department, because you do have paid-on call. So you could look at uh seventeen-twenty, and that would be based on your population density and your demand zones.
Okay, okay. So I was thinking about it.
There's a table in the, in the report that shows you urban, suburban, and rural, and the uh percentage responses and the staffing levels.
Okay, so, so seventeen-twenty would be more applicable to the, like, the mix of the demographic that we have in Fort Saskatchewan? That's, that, or that's not correct. It needs to be a mix of both.
Um, your worship, the question would be is if you're gonna retain a paid-on-call service, like volunteers supplement, then you would use seventeen-twenty. If you're gonna transition full career, then you could use seventeen-ten or aspects of either one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, you're all finished then. Okay, Counselor Kelly, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Again, I, I wanna repeat some thought I have just, or, or touched on with the last time I talked. And it, it revolves around perhaps my frustration with, with not the fire department, but with my frustration and, and perhaps how our city has handled this whole thing for the last several years. And I'm speaking for myself as a counselor in two thousand and eighteen when this, when this hit our plate. The change back then was significant. It affected our community because of the large number of paid-on-call personnel that we had in the community and had participated for a long time. We were told that the response of three plus one would work, and now we're, we understand that it isn't working very well. We were told that it would, that, that paid-on-call supplement would work, and now we understand that it isn't working very well. I think that this particular juncture, and this, these comments perhaps addressed to Mr. Fleming more than anybody else and to my fellow counselors, uh, is a proper time for us as a council to better engage our public, our citizens. And these are, these are complex issues, absolutely. They require expertise. But we need to engage our citizens to, to get a feel for reading truly what it is our community expects. I would, I, I think that's absolutely critical. And it, we also have in our community a large number of highly-trained individuals, thanks to our, our industrial neighbors who could contribute to, I think, meaningful, meaningfully to this, this particular discussion going forward. So I'm not looking for a timeline, Mr. Fleming, rather than a process that, that allows this council to, to get some public input, phase this thing through council in a way that council can digest it and understand it better than I would suggest we did five years ago. And, and I would like to add, just Mayor Catcher, if I can, one last comment on the, on the whole process. We need economic analysis as well. Insurance costs for every citizen. And I raised this question when, when the, the budget was, was approached for two, the purchase of two fire pumpers and asked to then fire chief, could you make an economic case for me? Can you tell me what happens to my insurance rates if we don't have a suitable fire response team or fire response policy, fire response process? And the answer was, 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 really didn't help much. I, I, I've asked multiple times what it costs, what it would cost new homeowners to buy a house that meets the HERF standards under the building code as opposed to one that does not. And the responses I've had seem to be rather subjective along the lines of, well, the builders tell us it's tens of thousands of dollars. And, and I don't know what the number is. I don't believe it's that expensive. I don't believe it's anywhere near that expensive. So, so I'd like an analysis of, of our options that includes some economic breakdowns, some, more than just the cost of a fire hall, but a cost to the community of both providing and not providing or changing service levels. And, and it, it makes no sense to, to talk about just the cost of increasing the manpower for the service level we have right now or the fire hall we have right now. Because it's abundantly obvious that sometime in the fairly near future, we must build another hall. So what we set today in this hall will carry forward to the ling hall. And, and those, that, that service level cost will, will maybe not double, but will be significantly impacted with the decisions we make today. So, so Mr. Fleming, this counselor is, is very sincerely asking for a deeper, more public, more understandable approach to this entire discussion as we move through it. Because it's meaningful to not only myself, but I guarantee you to the entire community, this hits home with everybody and everybody needs to have a say, but everybody needs to understand most of the parts of it before you can have a, 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 an informed opinion and feel comfortable with, with what you're advising City Hall to do. So, so I'm not looking for a, a tight timeline. I'm looking for a process, Mr. Fleming, and, and we can have that discussion at a later date. And again, I, I like every other counselor, I just want to close by saying that, that I thought the report was great. It would, it exceeded my expectations to be honest, but it is a report card. And this report card, I think, shows that this council and this community has a lot of work to do in this area. And it's time we got at it. And I'm less concerned about doing it fast than, than I am about doing it properly. So I'll leave it at that, Mayor Catcher. I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Harris, do you have any additional questions? All right, we're coming to an end here. So I said I was going to ask Mr. Fleming this wraparound question at the end. So I know the recommendations talk about 2024 and potentially beyond. So as we're coming up on our budget for 2023, is there any opportunities? I know, you know, like we've had transit taken out. You know, if there's any other options, do you have any, any thoughts on that? You know, whether it's a little bit now?
Yes, so through your worship, typical, I think a typical process we would follow for something like this is council gets a report and then, and then would get the action plan and within the next few months perhaps. And you would probably look at implementing, if you, if you did want to move forward and implement anything, you would use the 2024 budget deliberations as your option. If there was a desire to do something sooner, I think, because you referenced the 2023 budget, you could do a mid-year budget adjustment. Not typical for the operating budget. You could also look at doing something when we approve the final tax rate in May at that time. And, and yes, you could look at reallocating funds within the operating budget. Either funds like you mentioned, some of the transit commission dollars that won't be used, or if there's any assessment growth dollars, you could look at allocating at that time. So those would be options.
Okay, and we'll know that closer to the tax assessment time?
Yeah, through your worship, just going by memory, I believe we approved the final property tax assessment on May 9. We are actually going to come to council sometime in April to get guidance on the direction we would take in allocating. We're going to have some extra property tax assessment, like growth from the supplementary assessment. And we want direction on how council wants to handle that prior to May 9. I think our policy recommends that that money go in a reserve and it become part of the 2024 operating budget. But I know during the 2023 budget deliberations, there was a lot of comments about wanting to talk further about reducing the property tax impact and whatnot. So we're actually going to come back to council, I think in April, to have a conversation about the supplementary assessment growth. And then the final tax assessment would get approved on May 9.
Okay, and at that time, do you think you would have some of these recommendations sort of flushed out that you might come back with at that point in time?
Through your worship, I, I don't know that we're going to have this report flushed out and that Mr. Martins will be back sort of with his action plan. But there, there are, the figures within this report could be used to help look, look at options for council if there was a desire to do that. So I think the report breaks things out enough that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Last call. Anybody else? Any final questions? Or I'm going to close this one off. Okay, this has been an hour and 35 minutes. So you've done exceptionally good at answering all the questions. We thank you for producing the report. As Mr. Fleming said, they wanted an unbiased report. They didn't want to have their opinions injected into this. So I think that probably speaks volumes. Appreciate Fire Services coming out to listen in as well rather than hearing things secondhand or thirdhand. So as he's come forward, be sure to come out to the council meetings or tune in on YouTube so that you can listen and hear what the discussion and debates are going to be going forward. So thank you very much for your time. And with that, we're going to sign off on this item. I think we probably need, do you want a few minute break? Yeah, so we will recess. Let's take 10 minutes and then we'll have our weed control people come in. Thank you. Let's take ten minutes and then we'll have our weed control people come in. Thank you. Okay, I think we're going to resume. Counselor Kelly, are you there? I know I said ten minutes and we're pretty close to that on this clock. Yep, okay. All right, so the next item that we have is weed control program. And a second, I've lost my agenda. And we have Richard Gagnon and Janelle Hart presenting, and this is for information only.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. My name is Richard Gagnon and Janelle Hart will lead the presentation today. Thank you.
So good afternoon, um, members, chair, members of the community. Um, my, my name is Janelle Hart. Uh, with me is also Richard Gagnon. During last year's budget process, council requested administration come back to provide information on our weed control program. The purpose of this presentation today is to provide the committee of the whole with highlights of the weed management program. And our opportunity to discuss at the end. Detailed information uh, is available in Appendix A of your council report. So integrated pest management is an ecosystem-based strategy that focuses on the long-term prevention of pests, which are weeds, insects, diseases and rodents through a combination of controls. In reference to the slide, controls include cultivation. Uh, so monitoring of areas, fertilizing, aeration, top dressing, irrigation, that sort of thing. And then we have mechanical control, which includes weeding, um, or mowing, line trimming, hand pulling of weeds. And steaming of the weeds. Uh, biological controls include establishing herbivore animals and insects that selectively feed on the pest and the targeted weed. Uh, we, for instance, like our sheep grazing program or our goat program. Also, the naturalization program feeds into this where we add diversity into our city and into our parks. Where these animals and pests can live and help control. Chemical controls is the last that we use and that includes um, registered pesticides. The weed control program is a three-year program that address persistent pests within, with patches within the city. Rehabilitation strategies are reviewed each fall, or sorry, each spring. And areas of concern are prescribed a primary control method. Substantive controls consist of um, aggressive aerating, top dressing, seeding and fertilizing. Each fall, we go back to the areas that we addressed and to do an assessment to see if there's any follow-up need for the following year. Implementing controls is timed based on the pest. For instance, dandelions and thistles are controlled when they're budding and flowering, um, but of course prior to them going to seed. Most importantly, healthy environments, uh, vegetation and soils are the best competitors against the weeds and disease. In twenty twenty three, areas of focus are locations within neighborhood parks that require our attention and some action. So the areas with the orange arrows are the focus areas for twenty three and the blue areas are the focus areas for twenty twenty four. The plan for thistle this year includes the introduction of our uh, mechanical control, which is the slope mower. Uh, which council approved in December to target thistle patches. There are currently fourteen patches in the city covering nearly twenty nine acres that um, has been identified, most of which are located on slopes. The purchase of this mower will adopt, will, will allow parks to adopt a more aggressive approach towards the mitigation of thistle. The Indigenous Society of Fort Saskatchewan advised the city that certain weeds and plants such as thistle, dandelions and chamomile have cultural value to indigenous peoples as traditional municipal med- medicinal plants. This concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'll open it up to questions. Counselor Noyan?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm looking forward to seeing our steep slope mower in action this summer. Um, just a, a question, what this report obviously made for council. What, how, how does this compare to our service level in, in the last year? Is this a new three-year program?
Uh, so last year we did implement some of these strategies. Um, and then of course, moving forward, we'll implement more. Just getting what we do in practice on paper is, is pretty much what we presented today.
Great, and that's all I was looking to hear. So thanks very much for that and it gives us some ideas of what you guys are thinking about as well.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Harris?
Um, I'm really glad to see that you've addressed the thistle issue because this has been going on for many, many, many years. And obviously this would have been growing. I didn't know that there was some cultural significance to thistles. But from my point of view, it is a noxious weed and it needs, they need to be eradicated. I wasn't aware that they were on slopes, but where I see the most of them is maybe where I walk the most. Which is down in the West Rivers Edge area, in the wetlands and in the, uh, the area that was, I guess it's was going to be the campground and all that sort of stuff one time. So I'm glad to see that. And, and obviously the best way to kill um, thistles is to damage them, as you say. So I'm glad to see that you've got that, that handled. So if we can do this in a systemic, systematic way, then, then I'll be happy because uh, they're terrible, they're horrible and uh, they, they need to die. Now, I'm not sure how you, how you deal with that in relation to this First Nations Aboriginal kind of thing with medicinal thing because how, how are, how, how are we going to be sensitive to that and still keep, kill thistles? How, how are you going to do that?
So at those, at, so through your chair to, to Counselor Harris, so at this time, we haven't had those um, conversations with the Indigenous Society as to how we can approach it, but through our urban forestry management um, master plan, we'll be looking at starting those conversations.
Fair enough. Good, thanks.
Thank you. I've just got one question. So with the new mower, will that replace the goats every year, every couple of years?
Not initially, but we're hoping in the future it will, yes.
Okay, and how, how often do the goats come? Not the sheep, the goats?
So currently the goats um, come annually. Um, this summer there, we're, we're hoping that they'll, we'll see them three times over the summer.
Okay, you can maybe, I don't know, push something out on social media because people love to go walk and see them and we don't know they're there. So I loved it when I come over the hill on West Rivers Edge there and it was like, holy crow, there's like it looked like a million goats. Anyway, maybe we can just push something out on social media so we can retweet it or uh, let people know they're there. So, thank you. Uh, are there any final questions? Going, going? Nope. All right. So thank you very much for your presentation here this evening. Uh, keep up the good work and uh, uh, maybe let us know when that new mower is out so we can see it in action sometime. It's really cool. All right, are there any counselor inquiries? Not seeing any. There is uh, no closed session today. We have no need for a closed session. So with that. No, with that, then if there's nothing else, then at four four fifty-five, I will declare that we are adjourned. Thank you very much.